We'd like to call this special session of our Town Council to order. We'd like to call our meeting to order, thank you. Roll call?
Mayor Winfield.
Here.
Vice Mayor Barrett.
Here.
Councilmember Jones-Ivy.
Here.
Councilmember Nicholson.
Here.
Councilmember Pena.
Here.
Councilmember Rodman.
Here.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Upcoming meeting announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Planning and Zoning Commission will be meeting on August 6th at 6:00 PM in the council chambers. The Water Utility Commission will be meeting on August 12th at 5:00 PM in the Hopi Conference Room. The August 15th Storm Water Utility Commission meeting has been canceled. The Budget and Finance Commission will be meeting next on August 20th at 4:00 PM here in the council chambers. The next Board of Adjustment meeting is August 27th at 3:00 PM here in the council chambers. And then the next Town Council regular session will be in September 4th at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council reports. Hearing none, we'll move on to the Town Manager's report. All right, thank you. I'd like to, at this point, review the order of business. I would like to propose some changes. I'd like to move Item 6, which is the discussion regarding the Town of Oro Valley Community Center and Golf Operations. I'd like to move that forward as our first item. I would like to, at the request of Vice Mayor Barrett and Councilmember Nicholson, remove the regular agenda item number five from the agenda. I would also like to, because of the agenda, and I believe what much of the time will be focused on the golf community center agenda item, I'd like to recommend that we move the SED's presentation to a future council meeting. It may be a special session. JJ, we'd just simply like to be able to devote more time to that agenda item. So a date and time will be announced for that. The other items can follow in the order that they are with those changes. In terms of blue cards, we have no informational items. I don't have blue cards this evening that are not on a specific agenda topic. Let me just say that if you've come this evening and you want to speak about the golf community center agenda item, and you filled out a blue card at the July 24th meeting, but you've not filled out a blue card this evening, I need to ask you to do that. So the blue cards are over in this corner of the room. Maybe the gentleman in the white, Chris, yeah, right? So in that corner. So if you would like to speak on this item, please fill out a blue card. Even though you filled out one on the 24th, we need to ask you to do that again. So I did have one agenda item for item number three that we are going to move to another council meeting. So just to that individual, we'll not be addressing that tonight. And also, for your information, we were going to be making a presentation. We had an Oro Valley Little League U-11. They are our state champions. They've played in Flagstaff this past week. We were going to recognize them this evening, but we've postponed that, and we'll be doing that sometime in the future. Any questions about how our agenda will go forward? Okay, with that, if we'll go to the consent agenda. Entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items A through E. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So we'll go to the regular agenda item, remembering that item number six has been moved to item number one. We've actually done this, obviously recognizing that most, if not all, of you are here tonight for that particular topic. And we want to, out of courtesy, of course, and to provide as much time as possible within those three-minute time limits. Just as a reminder, this is a meeting where we value decorum, civility. I appreciate you very much. Our meeting last week went very well, and it's helpful if we can, I ask you not to applaud, not to jeer, not to disrupt the meeting. This is largely so that we can accommodate as many speakers here tonight. Some folks are inhibited by the jeering or applauding and so forth, so I just ask you if you would please not do that. And so we'll, Mr. Standish, if you would read item six?
Discussion on Possible Action Regarding the Town of Oro Valley Community Center and Golf Operations.
So as a reminder, so we are taking public comment. If you would like to speak to this particular topic, please fill out a blue card. Just take them in the order that I receive them. If you fill one out, it needs to go to Mr. Standish. And we'll begin, we didn't reserve seats, but what I'd like to do is I'm going to call three names just to keep things moving. So our first speaker this evening will be Chuck Cabrera. He will be followed by John Eisenbarger, followed by Ally McBride. So Chuck. Chuck, are you with us this evening? Are you Chuck? All right, so we'll go to John Eisenbarger.
I'd be happy to take his three minutes. Well, first, I'd like to ask that there might be a motion to-
Sir, can you please speak into the microphone?
First, I'd like to ask that maybe you could consider a motion to make this a golf-exclusive meeting instead of golf and community center, because we are, you know, the people here are primarily interested in what's going to happen to the golf course. Any changes with regards to the community center are going to be dependent upon what happens to the golf course. So talking about the community center and the community center's massive losses is immaterial to whether or not the golf course should continue to survive. So if the clock can be reset and a motion made to make this a golf course only, okay, if not, if not. Okay, first, I'd like to say, our mayor has said that converting our golf course to desert won't reduce property values. Yet two years ago, he fought with his HOA demanding that they replace the golf or the grass in their tiny park. I am writing in support to restore the grass area. I believe the board has not complied with the CCNRs, and their actions have harmed the quality of life for residents and diminished the value of all our properties. Sincerely, Joe Winfield. Now he's saying that he doesn't care about destroying our property values as long as he can protect his property value. I have a real problem with that. Mary, are you sure you don't have any comments to make regarding the financials? Okay.
Please, Director.
Okay.
Hold on, stop the clock. Let's make sure that we are following the decorum, and your comments need to be addressed to the mayor and council. And just make your comments, they're not going to respond, just address them.
Okay. The finances are totally, totally wrong. Every time that anybody comes up here and talks about the golf course that's critical, they're saying, "The golf course is losing $1.7 million." You know, that is totally wrong. Everybody up here knows that that's what the whole community center is losing. The golf course is supposedly losing about half that. Well, Mary's financials, right in the presentation, it says that the number of employees, full-time equivalents, is 52.2. Well, guess what? The number of equivalent employees for the golf is 37.47. That's the exact correct number. And several of those people are working for both operations. So it's really about 32, 33 employees. So the finances are off by 20 employees. At 35 to $40,000 apiece, the golf course is getting charged for $700,000 to $800,000 of expenses that are not golf course expenses. Another big hit, the 100% desert option is figuring finances based on it's going to cost, you know, X number of thousands of dollars per acre. And they're multiplying it times 138 acres of golf course that's going to be converted to desert. Guess what? We've got almost 300 acres of desert. All 300 of that has to be maintained. The extra desert that's being maintained right now is being paid for by the golf course. So that has to be included in the cost of no golf. It has to be included in anything where the golf course, you know, square footage is reduced.
Ally McBride and Greg Kishi, you're in the queue. So the clerk has just reminded me, for those in the overflow area, the courtroom, if you would like to speak during this session, you'll have that opportunity. And I'm not exactly sure how we're going to make their way over. So make your way over to the chambers, and we'll do our best to accommodate you. Ally?
I'm actually Jamie McBride. Ally is my husband. We are recent residents here in Oro Valley, and our longstanding position on this, although recent residents, is simply that nothing about the near future of the golf course should be decided until fuller discussion of the long-term future has been had. I feel like it's undeniable that shuttering the course would send home values plummeting, potentially leading to foreclosures and loss of funds for public safety, which has already been touched upon. And public safety is a perk that all Oro Valley residents benefit from that cannot be debated. It's undeniable by the attendance, both here tonight and at other public gatherings, that the townspeople overwhelmingly support maintaining the golf courses as they are. And while I admit that I live near or on the Conquistador Golf Course, we are willing to incur additional fees as residents of those golf courses to subsidize the expenses that are the core of this conversation. And to turn a deaf ear to your constituents and only placate them at best is a disservice to the community and makes a mockery of the democratic discourse. Thank you.
Greg Kishi, followed, Jane Levine, you are in the queue.
I would prefer to go after everybody that tried to speak on the 21st, if that's okay.
If you would speak now, Greg.
I will speak now, then, all right. My name is Greg Kishi. I have been a resident of Oro Valley for 28 years. I'm speaking to you today as the president of the Villages of La Cañada Homeowners Association. Villages of La Cañada consists of 580 homes located approximately at the southeast corner of Lambert and La Cañada. Holes 10 through 14 of the Cañada Course run through the Villages of La Cañada. A little over a year ago, during the campaign for Town Council, I sent a letter on July 3rd, 2018, as president of the HOA, to all village homeowners stating the importance of the golf course to our HOA, because I knew a significant number of mail and ballots had already been filed. I wanted to say that the challenging candidates wanted to reduce the golf course operations. I was unable to do so, because at that point in time, the challengers had been careful not to clearly articulate their position on the golf course. At this point, it would be a false assumption by some members of the council that all the votes cast for the new council are the basis for a mandate on the golf course. As we know, some people voted for change, for a council that would do a better job listening to its constituency. You've given your constituency a chance to address the council. The following numbers are my personal count, but I believe these numbers are accurate enough to make my point. At the February 20th Public Input Session, the comments were 22 to 5 in favor of the golf course with two unknowns. At the July 24th Public Input Session, the comments were 41 to 7 in favor with one unknown. I have not seen all the letters you have received, but I understand that they are overwhelmingly in favor of the golf course. Your vote on this issue will demonstrate your willingness to listen. Thank you.
Jane Levine, followed by Dave Herickczek?
Ritzak.
Herickczek?
Good evening. My name is Jane Levin. I have lived in Oro Valley for 12 years. I was at the meeting last week, and Vice Mayor Barrett, I appreciate your efforts to gather information from comparable towns' golf courses. Your conclusion was that it costs too much for Oro Valley to operate the golf courses. But I'm struck by an obvious question, which is, why? Why does it cost so much for Oro Valley to operate our golf courses? So there are factors that you may have investigated that come to my mind, like, did other towns make large capital investments four years ago or five years ago? Is there only one golf course in that town? Does Trune operate it? What are the membership fees? What are the fees for non-members? What hours are they open? Are they more than ours, less than ours? So I would appreciate answers to these questions, because I want to compare apples to apples here, and I suspect you do, too. And without the data, I don't know. So if you have those data, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Dave, Edward Cook is in the queue. Dave at the podium.
I'm Dave Ritzak. I live at 1965 West Desert Highlands Drive. I'm at ground zero on the golf course overlooking hole number 11. The potential closing or repurposing of the town-owned golf courses is of great concern to many homeowners of the Cañada Hills Association, as well as other residents in Oro Valley. It's widely agreed and reported that the closing of golf courses reduces the value of nearby homes significantly, with a rippling lesser effect cascading to the outer boundaries of the municipality. Per the Greater Southwest Evaluation, which dated May of 2019, homes directly on the golf course could lose 18 to 30 percent. Others within the golf course community could lose up to 9.5 percent. Now, these figures may vary by published reports, but there's no denying the destructive nature of a golf course closure to real estate values. Now, those individuals supporting the closing and/or repurposing, they need to provide their evidence and facts to the contrary. All cost impact calculations must include lost homeowner property values throughout Oro Valley and reduction in the asset value of the golf course and community center as a result of the closure, which I believe we paid $44 million for. Research has demonstrated that amenities such as golf courses and parks, bikes and trails, and yes, aquatic centers create value for the entire community. These amenities are important to home buyers and to their families. These amenities that no one person can create, but can be created by the community for the community. Evaluating the golf course closures and/or repurposing based on the golf course's profitability or non-profitability is a grave mistake. A review of the details of Oro Valley's proposed 2019-20 operating budget of $107.5 million will show that all significant amenities under the Parks and Recreation Department, i.e. golf courses, aquatic center, bike paths, municipal parks, et cetera, all operate at an expenditure level above the revenue created from these venues. With that above reasoning as your criteria that pay-as-you-go or you don't exist, then the entire Parks and Recreation Department should be shut down and closed. Fortunately for the golf courses, they take in the greatest percentage of revenue to offset a portion of its operating expenses. Oro Valley's activities and amenities provided to the community should not be treated as a business-type cost, expected to sustain itself on the revenues it takes in each year. Taxes are levied each year to give citizens these community amenities to be available to the entire community. Oro residents also take great pride in their community. It should be good to focus on the damage to the town's brand that will result from the closure of the golf course. Oro Valley is thought by many as the Tucson Scottsdale. It's been an upscale community with outstanding master-planned communities and public facilities. These public facilities include the two 18-hole golf courses up for closure and repurposing, which are located at the very heart of downtown Oro Valley. They are readily visible from three major roads plus the Cañada Hills Drive. While desert vistas are wonderful, and we have an abundance of them, the beautiful green towns' fairways have a special visual impact on golfers and non-golfers alike. They reinforce the town's image as a desirable place to live, visit, and raise your families. A desirable brand or image is hard to establish but easily to destroy. A sad reminder of the negative impact to a golf course community closure is the current situation of the privately-owned club of Vistosa that closed in June of 18. The slowly evaporating water hazard on the 8th Green-
Dave, you've exceeded your three minutes.
Okay. Well, the last thing I ask is, why doesn't the association, our master, work with the Town Council with all these wonderful ideas I've heard over the last five months to come up with a more optimal way of ensuring this golf course stays in existence?
Thank you, Dave. I'd like to invite Edward Cook to the podium. Vince Curry, you're in the queue. Just a reminder, the three minutes, I can't see the clock and the beeps, I'm not sure what they mean either.
Mayor and council, I come before you tonight, and I want this on the record. This is from an absentee resident who's away for the summer. He writes an email to you all. I don't know if you read it, but I'm going to read it to you. He says, "Mayor and council, I was not able to attend a special council meeting July 24th, but did view it via live streaming. My takeaway from the meeting was, there is a lot of support for retaining of 36 holes from a golfing perspective, from a retention of property values, from a quality of the standpoint, and from a tax revenue to the town, which provides many services such as police and fire protection, to name a few. As I listened to the residents, I got the feeling that vast majority were not opposed to funding the community center with 36 holes of golf. Speakers from the Chamber of Commerce and the Fire Department spoke to concerns for lost property tax revenues and how that will impact the town and services. Apparently, they believe the information addressing the property values and sales tax revenue losses are and are concerned about how it will affect the town's future. I also watched the Budget and Finance Commission meeting via live streaming and felt the council could not feel good about how the process went. Many I've talked with are asking why the commission and staff could not have completed a joint study. The effort resulted in two sets of numbers, a duplication of staff time and a waste of taxpayers' money, a future delay of decision, and I am sure frustration on the part of the staff. Many are now asking why another meeting, one week later, will know apparent direction to resolve the disparity. The cost analysis prepared for the town and commission reflect income and expenses without consideration of the bigger economic picture. Under scenarios 1 and 2 and 3, there are sales tax revenues. Under the no-golf option, there are none. Why does the analysis not include the lost revenues so that everyone can have a true picture of the bottom line?" I only have a minute left, so I'll give this to the record, but I want to put my personal remarks in here. I'm an OnTrip advisor, and it says, "Things to Do in Oro Valley." 10 items are listed on the page. El Conquistador Golf Courses had 45 replies. Gaslight Theater had replies, the Aquatic Center had 26. Oro Valley Golf Courses, The Views and Oro Valley Golf Course got it. All the reviews. Honeybee Canyon got three for hiking. My question to you, should you choose to vote to closure of the golf courses, I would recommend you add a line item to the Budget and Finance Commission for attorney fees, because we, the people, will challenge your decision with recall election and in the courts. We will not stand by and see our home values decrease due to the vision of seven council members. Can I get an amen?
Amen.
Vince Curry, if you would come to the podium. Jeff Weir, you're in the queue.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, I'm Vince Curry. I've been an Oro Valley resident since 2010, when I came down from Alaska, retiring from a 40-year career. I did not play golf when I settled in Oro Valley, but I was attracted to Oro Valley, which at its core offers established golf-centric communities and the promise of real estate market stability and growth. And this interested me greatly. I could have gone anywhere and settled, but I look carefully at these factors. I now own a home in the Villages, an HOA community constructed in part along the El Conquistor Golf links. I'd like to address something about the operation of the course. I only play some golf now, not very good, but have never encountered much of anything effectively advertising this community asset to attract business nationally or from around the region. While a few amateurs advertising signs seeking golf and restaurant businesses have been planted at the front gate, they don't seem effective, at least to me, as a mechanism to reaching a larger market for golf and spa users. In fact, it seems to me since the purchase of this resource, Oro Valley has largely kept the course and amenities under wraps from those outside the valley. And you know the saying, "What happens when you fail to effectively advertise? Nothing." In contrast, another course in Oro Valley is doing that advertising, seems to be effective, and the course has been on national TV, and seems to me they're doing fairly well. So I have that question. Another question I have, if the council is so upset with ownership of the golf course asset, why not work to overcome any existing barriers to sale of the property and negotiate terms which allow the city to sell the course to a knowledgeable operator at a reasonable price? There are many property owners around the world who may very well be interested in low-price Arizona golf asset. Now, I ask two concerns about closing the course. I do believe the closure would allow the fairways to deteriorate into a desert, which would be a disaster impacting the entire community, not just those living on the course. One needs only to look at the Vistosa Course area, which has been referenced before, and you can see the coming difficulty of attracting new residents and homeowners into the Oro Valley core area along La Cañada. Closing the course designated as a place for golf and family homes in turns, I believe, will bring real property values to decline. And I cited as example what I saw today at the Orlando News, reports from the Orlando Area Realtor Association, addressing the Sabre Point closure in 2006, followed by reported value decreases in single-family homes, from 400K down to 212 within nine years. That's about a 46% decline. Condos on the course decreasing from 225,000 initially down to 60, and now, nine years later, to 30, which is a 73% decline. So I think there's a real issue there that is a concern to your constituents, and I would urge that in this noisy community fight, you be judicious, consider alternatives to complete course closures, which I am opposed to, and address the issue of what will happen to those who have invested in this community, their life savings, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Jeff Weir at the podium. Bill Lucas in the queue.
Good evening, mayor and council. Jeff Weir, resident, second time around. I'd just like to draw your attention to a few financial impact potentials. Our community association, Cañada Hills, has approximately 1,880 homes. An average value, pick a number, at least $350,000. That value is $661.5 million. You want to impact this by 10%. You want to take equity of approximately $66 million out of our pockets. Why would you do that? And you want to put in this place what? A park that nobody can get to? Private streets, no parking? We already enjoy this park, those of us that live there. Your neighborhood parks are the same. You enjoy it. I don't think people from somewhere else in the community come to your neighborhoods to enjoy your park. We have Neuron Park. We have other park facilities all over the place. This has to be carefully thought through, and I don't quite understand why there seems to be a rush to get this done. You get more than enough tax revenues with a half-cent sales tax to cover what are supposedly reported losses. What are you going to do, stop collecting the $2.5 or $2.4 million? You're going to get rid of that? I doubt that. So I'm not really sure what it is you're planning on doing. It just strikes me as it's kind of odd that tonight, you've asked the Budget and Finance Commission to come back to you because there's not enough information. There's not agreement. And you're sure as heck don't have all the input from us. You've heard some of us, and a lot of it is kind of frustrating, because the question is, why are you doing this? You don't want a water? The water that's used out there, we're going to pay for it, all of us. The water utility has to make up for that almost half a million dollars in lost sales somehow. You want to give up the water? Why would you do that? You use it for recharge and everything else. We're going to end up paying and paying and paying again. I just think you just don't need to rush through this. I understand that you want to find a way to- any, if any, revenues at all. You're here to help us. We're here to explain to you and share with you what it is that we really want. This is the place we choose to come to. Most of us came here by choice. We weren't born here. We weren't forced to stay here. We came here because of what this community is. The last thing I'll share with you is, please, please consider, if you change the golf zoning designation, you're going to have to go through a land use change, a zoning change, and if you do that, you can anticipate there's going to be a lot of negative feedback. Thank you very much.
Bill Lucas at the podium. Fred Swiderski in the queue.
Good evening. My name is Bill Lucas. I'm an eight-year resident of Oro Valley, living in Autumn Hills subdivision. My residence is on the ninth fairway of the El Conquistador Course. I'm on the board of directors of my homeowners association, so I'm impacted. I have several questions and comments. Why is the golf course being singled out for review and potential disposal? Why is this not being reviewed in the context, the overall context, of the budget of the Parks and Recreation Department? In that context, are other departments under review? The Police Department accounts for fifty-plus percent of the budget. Could policing be turned over to Pima County, resulting in substantial savings, just like the library? If finances are so tight, why did the town buy a lot on McGee and invest how much more to provide for storage of evidence? If there's no serious review of the overall budget, then I have to believe that this administration is in intent on undoing what its predecessor implemented, and I think that's wrong. The bell is rung. Move on to other concerns. My understanding is that the lowest-cost option is the thirty-six holes of golf, which will result in multimillion-dollar investment to upgrade the infrastructure and require continued subsidy. My recollection is that there's an estimated annual shortfall of one million dollars, one million plus in operations. Relative to the hundred-eleven million dollar annual town budget, that's chump change. There's a perception that golf is on its way out, therefore OVA should terminate operations. I've not heard a single word about golf in the context of resort development and tourism. Arizona does not have oceans to serve as an attraction. We make our own attractions in the form of golf courses. Without it, what would happen to the El Conquistador Resort? At the last meeting, we learned that loss of the golf course will result in loss of revenue to the Water Department, resulting in additional fees. Lower properties will result in reduced revenue and increased fees for fire protection. You fail to appreciate the amount of sales taxes generated by visitors who stay at the resort, whether or not they play golf, and you fail to consider the non-residents who pay the sales tax which support our operations. According to town's legal counsel, if the town shuts down the golf courses, HSL will pick them up for a lease of ten thousand dollars a year for the next fifteen years. Returning the golf course to HSL will be looked back as lunacy. Negotiate a minimum annual guaranteed payment from them, whether or not their guests use the course. There does appear to be, there does not appear to be a need for linear parks. Such a solution will generate, will not generate any revenue. The natural desertscape will create a serious fire hazard, threatening to burn down the center of the town, and likely result in an attractive nuisance. Oro Valley is described as a town of excellence and often cited as a favored community to live in. We focus on attracting upper-income people, hence the development of the biotech park. If that is our future, we need to invest in items that our prospective residents want: good education, safety, shopping, community amenities. Golf attracts people to OVA and contributes to our quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred Swiderski, my apologies, Fred, and Eileen Eager, you're in the queue.
No apology, you said it right.
Eileen Eager, you're in the queue.
Good evening. My name is Fred Swiderski, and this is my third opportunity to be at the podium. I am in favor of keeping the thirty-six holes of golf for a variety of reasons. Based on the information that I've read from the Finance Department, from the town of Oro Valley, the thirty-six holes is the most logical, logical way to go. In the advent that the council does choose to do something different, I believe that you have the responsibility to the community to show us what, what the plan is. And the Planning and Zoning Commission, if somebody's going to put a new subdivision in, we have to have a detailed plan submitted that can be reviewed by that Planning and Zoning. And I think the community deserves that and more. We also deserve to know the cost and of that particular change. It's been, it was brought up this evening that there's a differential in, in cost of water. In the advent that we shut down the golf course, we're still going to be paying approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars or greater that will be in the town's budget. It appears that we're going through this exercise because of cost, and be that true, should we close down the golf course? What's going to happen to the point-five percent sales tax? Is this still going to be in place? And if so, then the public, we're going to continue to pay. Therefore, no change. And the other thing that needs to be considered is that we are considered a tourist community, and if we shut down the golf course, what's going to happen to tourism? What's going to happen to the sales tax when small business is not generating the income that they did in the past? And are we going to see more small businesses close? Many of our small businesses, and I've only spoke to two, all right, not statistically significant, but they both said that they make the majority of their money in eight months out of the year, and they have to budget for the other four. Now, if they're going to make the majority of their money in four months of the year, they're not going to last. Once again, I'm in favor of the thirty-six holes. I think the community has said that, and I'm asking you to listen to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Eileen Eager at the podium. David Grigsby is in the queue.
I'm looking at people that I know and know well, and I cannot figure out why you feel like you do about this community and why you want so badly to close this golf course. In about nineteen seventy-three...
Eileen, if you could pull the mic, just so we make sure we folks outside hear you.
In about nineteen seventy-three, a man by the name of Brandon came to our door and asked my husband and I if we would go door-to-door to ask people to sign the petition to incorporate this as a town. This town means so much to us. They had a vision for this town at that time, and what it is now is the vision that they had. And you seven have the, the possibility here of changing that vision and turning it around into something ordinary, when they really wanted it to be something special. And I was with them in wanting it to be something special. When they put that golf course in, it just upgraded everything. And being a Realtor here in town, I know how people feel when they come up that hill on La Cañada and they see the community. They're just in awe of it. Please, please, don't take that and ruin it because you have prejudices for some reason against it. Joe, I know you've been here since nineteen ninety-six. Melanie, two thousand and nine. Josh, two thousand and twelve. Ms. Ivy, two thousand and sixteen. Short time. I don't know if you have this community in your hearts like we do. I watched at that last meeting when so many people gave the opinion that they wanted this golf course to continue. I appreciated the things that Mr. Sullivan, Solomon said, and appreciate so much what Bill Rodman said at that meeting. But yet, Joe, at the end of the meeting, it was so evident that you were absolutely not going to change your mind. The day that they close this golf course, I'm going to be standing there with tears in my eyes, and so are a lot of people here. Not only that, but being a Realtor, I can tell you, the values of the properties definitely will go down because if you just look at, as you're driving down the street and you see that golf course and the greens and how beautiful it is, it upgrades everything. And then go into places where there is desert instead of golf course. Just think about the difference in the way that it looks. Does that mean my time is up?
I'm not sure.
Yes, it's up, and I'm sorry. Thank you.
David Grigsby at the... David, and I appreciate, again, just compliance with the decorum that I invited each of us to follow. I know it can be challenging, but I appreciate you doing that, and you've been doing a great job. David Grigsby at the podium. Tom Comey in the queue.
Mayor and council, thank you. Is David Grigsby. I've been a resident of Oro Valley for twenty-five years. I spoke to you about six months ago about issues that deal directly with me and real estate. I'm a member of Oro Valley, the El Conquistador Club, because I play golf regularly. I'm in favor of retaining the thirty-six holes, but I do not live in Cañada Hills, as I live down by Oro Valley Country Club. Is, my wife and I are at that point where we need to get on to a single level, so we've been looking for a new house. Cañada Hills and Vistoso were the two primary areas that we would like to have moved to, to accomplish that. I was waiting and have been waiting to see something get resolved so I could make a move. But the reality is that I'm now going to become a citizen, citizen of Pinale County because I'm in escrow on a home that I found that gets me out of the concerns about real estate and buying in the area that I would like to have been in. I will continue to be a member of the golf course, happy to pay the increased cost because I'm not a resident anymore. But you need to retain the thirty-six holes. It's, it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Comey at the podium. Mark Parston in the queue.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Dr. Tom Comey, and I have lived in Oro Valley for eighteen years, and full disclosure, have been a member of El Conquistador Golf and Tennis for almost as long. I have seen the vast improvement, oh, also, I serve on the board of the Men's Golf Association's handicap chairman, so you probably know what side of this I'm on. I have seen the vast improvement in golf course conditions since the town acquired the community center, and I thank the council for that. I have witnessed a resurgence in membership and outside play. I've got several new friends from that. Despite this, the loss of membership during the dark years prior to the town enlisting true management has not fully rebounded, due in part to the continued uncertainty of the future of the golf courses. On Monday, as a local volunteer to the First Team Organization, I witnessed nearly fifty youngsters, between seven and fifteen years old, brave the late afternoon hundred-degree heat to temperatures to learn about the core values the organization espouses: honesty, integrity, et cetera, which golf teaches, and to play golf. I would not like to tell them that golf is dead. It's a game of a lifetime that even non-agenarians can enjoy, while the light exercise helps to maintain their vitality. I think that's very important to every community. I do not need to revisit the certain loss of property or question the numbers out there, but I would say that this course closure loss has been demonstrated many times, once even here in Oro Valley. All I would ask is that the current uptrend in financial performance be allowed to continue with needed upgrades and less antagonistic rhetoric from the council. I implore the council not to make an irrevocable decision without fully exploring the potential of this asset to require less or no tax support, perhaps even becoming a profit center for the town. Thank you for your attention, and thank you for your service to maintain and enhance the brand and quality of life for Oro Valley, where we all have chosen to live. Please, just do your job.
Mark Parston at the podium. And then in the queue is Steve Jones.
Mayor, council members, town manager and staff. I'm a resident of Oro Valley, a non-golfer, and I do not live on a golf course. I'm here today in support of keeping the golf course open. Is the Aquatic Center profitable? No. Is the Archery Center profitable? No. Are bike trails profitable? No. Is the library profitable? No. All these resources are not profitable, but they are assets of the Oro Valley community, as is golf. Converting the golf courses to linear parks with walking trails appears to be a waste of taxpayers' funds, especially considering the fact that Oro Valley already has approximately fifty-four-point-five miles of walking trails, which is two times more than typical for a community our size, per national statistics. Snowbirds don't come here to go on hiking trails, but they do come to Oro Valley to enjoy the community's assets, which includes golf. It amazes me that this council can make an expenditure of approximately one-point-three million dollars on Naraha Park, which the taxpayers turned down twice and consider shutting down the golf courses. I'm hearing in the community that requests from numerous residents to work with and consider options with the mayor and council members are falling on deaf ears. Any financial analysis must consider the potential loss of revenue from declining visitor volume, loss of commercial revenue, and devalued property values. Finally, I'm hearing rumblings in the community about class action suits, court injunctions, and recall efforts. These potential actions should be considered in any financial analysis because if pursued, they will cost the city and taxpayers money. Please keep Oro Valley the vibrant community that it is and keep the golf courses open. Closing them will be devastating to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Jones at the podium. Peyton Davies in the queue.
I'm Steve Jones, Oro Valley resident of ten years, Cañada Hills Community Association Board Member. I'm extra nervous tonight because my wife is here, and I'm, I'm sure I'll be critiqued when we get done. She was very helpful, though, because she told me to take the gum out of my mouth before I got up here too. I've got ten things I'd like the council to stop doing. And addressing primarily Mayor Winfield, please stop stating that the Brecken-Nava report supports your contention that there will be no property devaluation and ignoring the body of the report that shows devastating property value losses. You are cherry-picking the report conflating Oregon Ponterosa Pine Forest with starter deserts, ignoring the statement that says golf courses add six times the value of urban parks to neighboring homes. Two, please stop telling residents you've checked with the Golden Fire Ranch District and fire hazard's not a major issue. The Golden Ranch Fire Chief has said that there was no request for any evaluation and has many concerns. Three, please stop trying to diminish our award-winning town staff's audit and numbers and analyses because they don't fit your preconceived biases. Four, please stop acting like access, traffic, and parking to the proposed linear park is not an issue. Please stop acting like you have a plan. A plan encompasses all issues. Seven, please stop acting like golf is not an amenity that adds value to the town in many, many ways. Eight, stop acting like the HOAs won't participate in a plan to find a solution and participate in a, in a subsidy. Nine, please stop acting like this is a financial disaster. The community center fund will show a surplus of several hundred thousand dollars this last year. Ten, please stop acting like there will be no legal repercussions or costs. Please stop before every Oro Valley resident pays the price. Additionally, one more con- Additionally, one more comment. Vice Mayor Barrett, you stated at the last meeting that golf courses, our golf courses, lose more money than 25 or 30 other courses combined. I'd like you to release that study. To me, if we're losing as much as 25 to 30 courses, we certainly got room for improvement. And to me, if there's 25 to 30 courses making money or breaking even, why not Oral Valley? Please stop. Thank you.
Peyton Davies at the -- please, Peyton Davies to the podium, Philip Lair in the queue.
I'm Peyton Davies. I'm a resident of Oral Valley. I wasn't going to speak tonight because I spoke last week, and I thought I got my point across, but I keep hearing that the council thinks there will be no loss of property value. And it's only mentioned in this brochure that you put out. One short line in the major pros, no negative impact to area residential property values. And then in the cons of the no-golf option, it says, "Potential negative impact on home values adjacent to current golf courses." Excuse me, it's the whole community that will be affected. It is not just the houses on the golf courses. And it never, this never mentions loss of tourism, snowbirds that will no longer come here in the winter. We are the Scottsdale of southern Arizona. We need to build our brand instead of losing it. It's so depressing for us to, I can't even believe all the people that will come and talk, because to talk to you, we think you've already made up your minds. And that is so depressing to us, because why should we even try? I could say a lot about the restaurant, but I think that should come for another day after we've made the decisions on the golf courses. Thank you for your help, and please keep an open mind. We need it so badly.
Thank you. Philip Lair at the podium, in the queue is Gary Stingle.
My name is Philip Lair. I've been, my wife and I have been residents of Oral Valley for almost four years. I'd like to begin by making two observations. Number one is discussion of closing Overlook Restaurant is premature until final decisions have been made regarding the golf course operations. Number two is retaining golf operations at 36 holes and adequate space for member and outside visitor activities is critical for the financial health of the community center. From a financial standpoint, moving the restaurant, removing the restaurant and replacing it with additional exercise areas means replacing golf memberships at approximately $500 a month with exercise memberships at $40 a month. It is obvious from a financial standpoint that golf needs to remain, needs to remain an adequate food service to be provided, in whatever form it would take. A snack bar that serves hot dogs and chips might be handy for some golfers, but it would not provide adequate space or service for large groups that frequent the golf courses and community center. There's been an argument against providing a restaurant that is town-owned because it competes with existing businesses. Why then would we close the restaurant and replace it with an additional exercise space, which would be competing with health and fitness businesses in Oral Valley? The Overlook Restaurant is not just a place to eat. There are several groups of men and women who play cards in mahjong and have lunch in the restaurant. People gather for book clubs, have meetings regarding a whole host of topics, including planning events such as weddings, birthdays, graduation parties that will take place at the community center. There are art classes, youth summer camp programs, and junior golf program, to name just a few of the additional community benefits. In closing, I'd ask you a basic question. Why is it more important to provide exercise space than it is to provide space for building community relationships? Is this not the very definition of community? Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Gary to the podium. In the queue is Stephen Fowler.
My name is Gary Stingle. I've been a resident, with my wife also, for the last seven years in Oral Valley. And one of the things I want to talk about tonight is a phrase that says, "Numbers don't lie." The IRS might like that, because it's in their favor. All we've been hearing from the last several meetings that I've been in attendance of is numbers. Everything is based on the decision for this community center and the golf course on the profit and loss that is generated and the numbers that come by either through the explorer, through radio, they're all different, they're all over the board. It goes from the poor golf course hemorrhaging to doing well. I am in favor of retaining the 36 holes of the golf course, and I wish that we could find a set of numbers that is a good representation of what we need to use to make a decision, because I haven't really seen that, but I hope that the council members and the mayor have seen a substantial set of numbers that has some meaning and some justification to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Fowler to the podium, in the queue is Rob Wonsik.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, my name is Stephen Fowler. I'm a 20-year resident of Oral Valley. I'm a native Tucsonan, and I live about two houses away from a golf course. When I was in high school, at Catalina High School, I debated a member of the Pima County Board of Supervisors. I prepared for and, I believe, successfully debated that man about land issues. I know a little bit about land issues, and so did he. He is largely responsible for the development of Catalina State Park. After leaving the University of Arizona and launching a real estate career in Tucson, I sold commercial and residential real estate. Again, I know a little something about home values, property values, and land management. I hate golf. I don't like that little ball. When I was selling real estate, I tried to use that as a client tool. Every time I hit the ball, it looked like a boomerang, and it went out and went away. I couldn't overcome that. I don't like golf. I don't like the grass that it's played on. I'm allergic to grass. Every time somebody mows grass and I smell it, I get sick. I don't like their clothes. I don't like their little golf carts. They get in my way on the streets. But I think that that sign right there should be moved if we get rid of the 36 holes. We should move it to Ironwood Ridge High School and put it in the history class, because as I sat here tonight and I looked at each of those five line items, I couldn't help but think that golf had a positive impact on that. My wife and I moved into our current home 15 years ago. It was built by a man who owned it for five years and who resided on the East Coast. He would fly to Arizona just to play golf. He built that home, furnished that home, stayed in hotels while the home was being built, ate at restaurants here, and he advanced our community. That's true for a lot of other residents in this area. A pastor of a large church and I had a conversation one time, and I asked him, "Why you are still playing the old hymns when people are liking the more contemporary music?" He said, "Steve, young people will build our future, but the gray-haired people are paying for today. You have to have golf in this community for it to survive." You know, you all were elected largely on what I consider a bumper sticker, uninformed need to address the new golf course that we own. I'm asking you, now that you have information, make an informed representative decision and keep our 36 holes. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Wonsik to the podium, Donna Shaw, you're in the queue.
My name is Rob Wonsik, and I'm a resident of Oral Valley. I hope you will consider the potential for crime and the added cost to control and enforce the laws and proper behavior. Statistics are hard to come by, but it's well-known, according to U.S. Department of Justice Community-Oriented Policing Services Guide, "Dealing with Crime and Disorder in Urban Parks." Parks are a magnet and attract, can attract disorderly contacts such as underage drinking, drug dealing, graffiti, graffiti, property damage, illicit sexual activity, homeless, and people with mental illness. If not, if not properly designed and patrolled, for example, homes that back up to a park's perimeter are problematic from a surveillance standpoint. Most of the homes, most of this golf course is surrounded by homes that back up to the golf course, and there's no way to view from other streets the, what's going on in the golf course. There's many other factors, too, that deal with the design of the golf, design of parks that this golf course doesn't, doesn't have. I hope that the, I hope that the council is prepared to commit funds to properly design and maintain this park and provide police protection from the above-mentioned illegal I'd also like to request that the council and mayor do not compare Oral Valley to towns in Oregon, Arkansas, or even towns, other towns in Arizona. Oral Valley is its own town with its own brand. Golf has been a part of this town for 35-plus years. The El Con and Kenyatta Course are the icons of this town and its brand. Please don't take this away. I believe a community solution is possible with compromise, innovation, investment, and good management. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna Shaw to the podium, Christine Houdena, Houdera. And before Donna, as you're coming up, Donna, please come forward. If there are folks in the overflow of the courtroom that would like to speak this evening, I invite you to come over and fill out a blue card. If there's anyone here this evening that has not filled out a blue card, I encourage you to do that. Okay, Donna.
Good evening. I'm Donna Shaw. I'm an Oral Valley resident for 20-some years. I've been coming to these meetings regularly to follow the process of reviewing the golf courses. I have better attendance at these meetings than I ever had at my civics class in high school, but my teacher would be proud. Over the weeks, months, and years, it is apparent that the course's benefit to the community is a positive one economically, aesthetically, and as a quality-of-life issue. And yet, here we are, still talking about linear parks, open space, and other ways to denigrate a valuable asset in this community. It is painfully obvious to anyone who has spent time looking at this issue, the arguments for closing down or otherwise changing the 36-hole makeup of the course will be a costly venture, no matter what you choose to change. Mayor Winfield's background, education, and career go a long way to explain his narrow-minded stance to put in linear parks when we already have more than 50 miles of paths. Support for this argument remains with Mayor Winfield. It doesn't show merit to others. Those who were concerned that the town would be bankrupted are now seeing the turnaround which was initially forecasted. Last week, a comment was made about increased property values in an Oregon community when they had linear parks put in around their property, which was primarily wooded areas. That was an improvement over what they previously had. It was not taking a developed piece of land and letting it revert to desert areas. We already have that process in Oral Valley. It's called Vistozo Golf Course. I finally figured out what the crux of the problem is with this issue, and the resolution should be fairly easy and economical. You need to get these microphones fixed, because apparently you can't hear us.
Christine, if you'd come to the podium. In the queue is Mark Smith.
She was very good. Good evening, Mayor and Oral Valley Council. My name is Christine Houdena, and I am a resident, I have been a resident for over 10 years in the villages of La Kenyatta, and I also am a Realtor for Cobble Banker here in Oral Valley. I am here tonight to speak to each and every one of the council members. Please save our golf course. To the majority of the Oral Valley residents, the golf course represents the heart and soul of where we have chosen to live. You have heard so many reasons why not to close, why not to close the golf course, and I am compelling you, please do not do it. I won't repeat those statements, but I would like to add one more to the list, and this is something that is important to me. Many people moved to Arizona for health reasons, and many of them including respiratory. Therefore, I do not want the land dug up and repurposed. Speaking as a valley fever survivor, this could kill the attraction and desirability of our community. I see every day how the community center and golf course brings residents together, giving us a sense of community, since we do not have a town center for our residents to gather. Please, Mr. Mayor, put aside your personal opinions and listen to the 750 residents who have spoken to you. Your job is to work for the residents of Oral Valley. It's the future. It's the greater good. I have heard the voices of parents who need more space for their children after, children's after-school sports. They deserve that, too. Couldn't, there's just an idea, couldn't the land at Steam Pump Farm, at Steam Pump Farm offer some resolution for that? Oral Valley's future is in your hands. Please propose a plan which serves us all. The best idea I've heard so far is to put this on hold, at least if you can't make a decision, to keep it open. The course, the time is now. Let's figure out the true pros and cons of this issue, and to have the wisdom of hindsight, thus not regretting the loss which this community will never have again.
Thank you. Mark Smith to the podium, Guillermo Morales in the queue.
Mark Smith, been a resident of Oral Valley the last four years. I want to thank the council for their service, as I realize you're in a very difficult situation due to the contract that was signed to purchase the golf course five years ago. This wasn't your fault, and we all have to try and make the best of a difficult situation. I'm sure, I'm not sure how many people realize how one-sided the agreement is. I think it's critical to publish some of the key items in the agreement regarding HSL and the impact to Oral Valley taxpayers. For example, if you decide not to renew the management with Trune, HSL has veto power in any new management. If you do renew in December 2019, the agreement is extended 15 more years. If you close the golf course, HSL has the right to lease back the property for $833 a month for 50 years, and the town of Oral Valley is responsible for paying the property taxes no matter what happens. Before any decision is made, please update the one, five, 10-year budget projections to reflect all costs relative to each option. If you do close the course, you need to show the estimated losses in property values and property tax losses, loss of tourism, vacation rentals, the loss of overall sales taxes, the loss of the half-cent sales tax, as well as the loss of revenue to the water utility. Combined, this is a conservative estimate of another $1 million in annual taxpayer costs that need to be added to the non-golf option. As far as I can tell, none of this is included in the current projections. You simply can't just cut the cost of the golf course without eliminating the various revenue sources associated with it, and you need to make it clear to everyone what the net effect to the budget will be. People in favor of closing the golf course make the argument it only benefits about 225 members, but I'd suggest having a resident and non-resident rates to keep track of how many people actually use the golf course, how many residents. You also have, you have about 50,000 rounds of golf paid for each year, and no idea how many residents actually use the course. many residents actually use the course. From the budgets I've seen, there does not appear to be much difference in the cost to taxpayers if you close the course or you keep it open. And if you do close the course, there's very little upside in the number of additional costs, and there's a number of additional costs not currently factored in. Some, if you decide to keep it open, how do we increase current revenues and profitability to reduce taxpayer expense? Some ideas are working with the HOAs around the golf course to offset the costs, renegotiate the cost of the water with the water utility, have resident and slightly higher non-resident golf rates for golf, lease the restaurant to a third party so the city doesn't incur costs going forward, make the irrigation and other course improvements to increase play, sell the push ridge nine back to the, back to HSL, consider adding a hotel tax that tourists pay, and try to renegotiate the current legal contract. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Guillermo Morales to the podium. Rene Morales in the queue.
Good night. My, my name is Guillermo Morales. I'm an Oro Valley resident, live in the villages of La Cañada. I have to say I'm a little puzzled by what has been presented to us with many numbers that are in this booklet. And let's talk about numbers because, you know, clearly this is something that is driving, you know, decisions around here. 36 hole, by the way, I totally want that to stay in place. Estimate to keep it open, 3.8 millions to 5.1. All right, sounds good. 27 holes. 4.6 million. Okay. How come you don't provide here what the, you know, the range is and the calculations that you've made? Because you clearly go from, in the previous one, 3.8 to 5. So there's a range there that you, you know, kind of play with, but here's a very exact number. So, and the, and the difference between keeping this 36-hole open versus the 27 is about half a million dollars. But I would like to know what differences will be if you actually give us a range and start looking how close it gets. Simple math, no, nothing, nothing major about it, but I would like to know what that range is. Because if we start closing the range and we go from a half a million dollars to three or $200,000, that's more manageable. Because I want to go now to the point of you all not providing any indication as to what you want to do proactively to raise money to address these issues. All about hearing here from me is cut, cut, cut. Well, cut is easy, people. Building is not. I want to know from you, if you're going to hire, what, a good business development person to come help you figure out how to make money. It's as easy as that. You have assets, leverage them. And for that, you need to go and do business development. It's, it's plain and simple. Raise money. Don't come and say, oh, we just need to cut. Because that won't, that will not cut it. Thank you so much.
Rene Morales at the podium. George, please hold your applause. Thank you. Rene Morales to the podium. George Hayduk in the queue.
Hello. My name is Rene Johnson Houda, I'm Guillermo's wife. So I live with him in that same house in the villages of La Cañada. Neither of us are golfers, okay? And I will put out my bona fides. I worked for many years in Korea on the East Coast for a Fortune 100 financial firm that you would know. I managed international data centers for them. I know a little bit about making budgets work. I'm also a small business owner. Again, more, I understand how to make the ins come together in the middle. And one thing that I've discovered is you cannot cost-cut your way to profitability if that is what your objective is. While it's important to keep an eye on costs and spending your money wisely, I would submit that the fiduciary responsibility that comes with your elected positions here is bigger than saving money. Your fiduciary responsibility here is to shepherd the community resources to be the best possible use for the community, as mentioned, to maintain this beautiful community brand that we have here, which was part of what attracted us here and part of what keeps us here and part of what makes us happy. On a personal note, our HOA does not allow us to have grass. If you take the golf courses away and turn that into desert, I will have no grass, and this will hurt me to my soul. Thank you.
George Hayduk to the podium. Karen Kern, Kern in the queue.
My name is George Hayduk. I used to be vice president of the world's biggest finance company called Walter Heller International out of Chicago and was in charge of Southern Arizona, New Mexico, West Texas, and all of Colorado. And I financed a bunch of golf courses, including one in Yuma, most of McCormick Ranch, and Scottsdale. All of these projects that I've financed over the years have one thing in common. It's all about the numbers. The developer would come to me, he would give me a package that included fixed-price contracts, performance bond, and completion bond to make sure the project got done. What boggles my mind is that you've got a seven-year project to go tear the golf course up and turn it into whatever it's going to be, and you have no clue what the cost is going to be at one, three, and five, seven years. No builder, no developer, or no contractor is going to give you a fixed-price contract more than 60 or 90 days out because of fuel prices. They can't do that. The completion and performance bonds will not be available for five and seven years. So I ask you, as, as the mayor, how are you going to protect us in the future if you're going to do this job? Are you going to get us a completion bond and give it to everybody in Oro Valley to prove, to provide that the job gets complete? If you guys all work for me, and by the way, you all do work for me and everybody in this town, I would fire you. There is no right for you to be working. It's a bad job.
Karen Kern at the podium. And Larry Schmidt in the queue.
I'm going to pass people who have already come to the table.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Larry Schmidt at the podium. And in the queue is Susan Percy.
Hello, I'm Larry Schmidt, and I'm a resident of Oro Valley. My wife and I just moved here in 2016. We bought our house, and we bought it because of the golf course. I would have preferred to be closer to Tucson, to the downtown, but I came here because of the golf course. And most of the people that I've met around here came here because of the golf course. My good friend, Tim Kish here, he came back from the University of Oklahoma, coaching there, and he came back to Oro Valley to be here, and I'm pretty sure he came here because of his, a view of the golf course. I'm, my wife and I are, were professors. She was at Webster University, I was at St. Louis University, and I'm a critical thinking, that's, critical thinking is my, my game. I work with domestic and international students working on their critical thinking. And the idea of evolving thought. What is evolving thought? It's getting ideas, getting new information, and actually changing ideas. And the thought of, I have this idea and it's going to stay static forever. If, if you came in with that and you're, you're going to continue using that idea that, well, I came in to close the golf courses because I know, we know. And you hear all of this. And I heard you on the 24th, and at the very end, you started talking about Oregon. And on Zillow, I, I now work right now, retired, my wife had cancer, she, we came here, she's getting better, she's much better now. And I work for affordable housing. And I'm always looking at real estate prices. The prices of my house in the last month have gone down $30,000. I live on the golf course. And when you said our prices would not go down, I couldn't believe it. When you get new information, you change your ideas. You know, I hate when people say, oh, that person flip-flopped. No, they got new values. They, they have new ideas, and it changes them. And are you ever going to change? Are you ever going to hear what everybody is talking about and ever change? Because from what everybody tells me, you look like you listen, and you always stay the same. To change your ideas is not a weakness. It's a strength. Thank you.
Susan Percy to the podium. Susan Percy to the podium. Jose, Jose Cheveria, I apologize, Jose, but you're in the queue.
Hello, Mayor and Town Council. I think the reason everyone is here is because this is such an issue that is tearing at their heartstrings. I've lived in Oro Valley for 29 years, and I came here for the reason everyone else did, because it was a beautiful environment to raise my son, and I was really attracted to the city, the concept of the values and the quality of life that are here. So to introduce myself, I'm Susan Percy. I've lived here for 29 years, and I was the original builder of my home on the Elcan Quistador Golf Course. I feel that the golf course that goes, the 36 holes up either side of La Cañada are completely and utterly different than any 18-hole course that someone closed that is off in the corner of some subdivision somewhere that nobody even drives by or cares. Obviously, this is so meaningful to so many people here. It's been keeping me up at night, and, you know, it's crazy to think that I've lived here my whole life, and I've actually been walking up and down the hall thinking of all these things to say, and it makes me come to tears practically. It's, it's very important to people here in town, okay? I think that the two 18-hole courses up either side of La Cañada are the heart of Oro Valley. I've driven up, everyone drives up La Cañada. They either drive up La Cañada, or they drive up political in that traffic when they come home and when they go to work. I get a smile on my face every time I come down that hill into Oro Valley and see the beauty of the golf course with those push ridge mountains in the background. And as far as I'm concerned, you may as well take those push ridge mountains and tear those down, which is ridiculous, but that's how meaningful it is to people. And I just want to get that across. Anyone who thinks that it's a good idea to close the golf course should take a ride by the ranch of Estoso Course and see how the area is literally devastated. I drove out there with my 82-year-old mom. I got out, I ran around, I took pictures. It's just devastated. It looks like literally an environmental bomb went off there, truly. The water areas smell, the buildings also, by the way, have a thick dusty residue on them from airborne dust and debris blowing. I also have survived valley fever. My mom's 82. I can't imagine tearing these golf courses out now with trucks out there raising the dust and stuff. When the courses were put in, if it's true that it is a $45 million asset, I put to you this, please remember in your hearts places that you might have traveled when you were a kid with your parents on vacation, the communities that are beautiful, that retain their beauty and their significance. There are the communities that you may have gone to and taken your kids on vacation where they retain their main square, they retain their town hall, they retain the original beauty of the plan of the city. And this is going to fundamentally change Oro Valley, and not for the better, in my opinion. Also, I think there's a potential here for unfairness to people who invested their life savings, I'm one of them, and I can tell you about Zillow. I'll just mention this, and that'll be my last thing. My home on the Elcan Quistador Golf Course on Zillow as of July 15th date went down $46,000 in the last 10 weeks, and more alarmingly, it went down almost $30,000 in the last 30 days. That's $1,000 a day. I, I just, I can't imagine, you know, people need money for their kids' tuition and stuff like that.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you very much for listening.
Jose, and in the queue is Tom Domker.
I'm Jose Cheveria. I've been in Oro Valley for 15 years. The only thing I want to add is that about 600 homes and businesses are being built just west of La Choya against the will of many of us. Those people are going to be paying taxes, and they're going to help support the town, improve the economic situation of the town, which is already very good, as Councilmember Solomon said last week. And I'm sure many of them are going to become members of the community center and the golf course. Many of them are probably going to play golf. The other thing I want to add is that I live on Holy Level of Conquistador, and every day I see many people who are non-golfers using their golf course, like bikers, joggers, runners, people walking their dog. So this golf course serves not only the golfers, but also many people who just live around and use the golf course for enjoyment. So we are against repurposing the golf course, my wife, me, and my two kids, and we request that you guys think very thoroughly this issue and do not repurpose the golf course. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tom Domker. Are you Tom?
Yes, I'm Tom.
Okay. John Langone is in the queue.
Ready?
Yes.
I'd like to talk about, my name is Tom Danker. I work, I live in Oro Valley since 1998. I'd like to talk about two things, the financial analysis for this project and the linear park. The financial analysis that you've seen is all over the map. It's just so careless and reckless that people put, Mary Jacobs puts together a presentation that doesn't tie to anything. There's a budget and finance committee, two-person, three-person committee, two people come up with another recommendation as far as numbers go that don't tie to anything, and the other financial guy on the committee comes up with a third presentation. And so I just don't understand how people can go through that financial presentation when we have audited financial statements of Oro Valley. Audited financial statements that Stacy sits there and presents or prepares for probably six months and wins all kinds of awards in, in preparing. And I'd like to just kind of look at some figures in the audited financial statements. This isn't a financial decision, this isn't a grudge match of some sort. Oro Valley makes $77 million in revenue, 77 million. It makes $11 million in profit. You're talking about a half a million dollar decision on some golf courses? It's not even on the board. The cash in the bank for Oro Valley, $53 million, $53 million in cash and short-term certificates. And so I think there's probably a little bit of opportunity to spend those, those dollars. When you look at the community center fund, which is one of the three major funds in the audited financial statement, it says, "This fund accounts for activity of Oro Valley Community Center, including golf, tennis, food, beverage, fitness revenues, and expenditures." This fund also accounts for the half-cent sales tax dedicated to these operations. It's dedicated. This is audited information. When Stacy and her auditors go through it, they're looking at the contracts. This isn't a women a prayer on the, on the sales tax, it's dedicated. And the results of the Oro Valley Community Center financials show that there's $6.7 million in revenue, $6.5 million in expenditures, for $191,000 profit in 2018. These are audited numbers. 2018, $191,000 in profit. And you guys are up here making all these accusations of financial analysis that make no sense. So I'm trying to point out that if you could start with the audited financial statements and make a decision using these, you'd make a much better decision. Thank you.
Thank you. John Langone at the podium. And John Langone at the podium, and Tanvi Narandran in the queue.
That's Lanjoni.
Lanjoni.
I would like to discuss a reality check right now. I spoke to each of the four new councilmen, the mayor and the other three council members, one-on-one, and I asked them what their platform was, and their platform was to do something about the golf course and, if it required it, to close it. Now, I hear recalls, injunctions, all kinds of stuff like that, threats. But the reality is, the mayor and those three council members were elected on the platform of doing something about this golf course, these golf courses, even if it means closing them. So threatening these four people with a recall when the majority of the citizens of this community put them in office would be counterproductive. And the idea that we're going to do all this gnashing of teeth here against you are the people that have pitchforks and torches. They are not the majority of the people of this community, so making threats about recall is incorrect.
Can we please, can we please, okay, now, in fairness, we, all of you, for everyone who has spoken, has shown respect for the speaker regardless of what they've said, whether you share that opinion or not, the council, the staff. I just simply ask you, let this gentleman speak.
Well, I'm not going to use up all my time. I can take the heat, and I'm through. Thank you very much for serving our community.
Tanvi Narandran. I apologize. T-A-N-V-I, oh.
So my name is Tanvi Narandran, and I am not a resident of Oro Valley, actually, but I came up here to speak today because I saw a pattern in like how this is, this meeting is going. Like, I feel like all the people don't want to foreclose the golf courses, and the, all the people that I have heard speak have a very clear position on this issue. And regardless of whether their decision is logical or not, they came here to voice their opinion because they are the people of Oro Valley. And I, in my U.S. history class, they were talking to us about how the job of the government and the people of the council is to represent the people of the country and whatever you're representing, because all of you are representatives. And even if you don't agree with what the people that you are representing stand for, your duty is to represent them. And all of these people have come out here today to talk to you about their opinions and their positions on this issue. And regardless of whether you agree with it or not, your main duty is to represent them, because they are the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanvi. Those are all the blue cards I have for this agenda item. Is there anyone else that has an interest in speaking on this particular topic? If not, I'd like for us to take a 15-minute break, and then I invite you to come back for further discussion on this topic item. So we'll resume at 7:50? We'd like to call the meeting to order. We'd like to call the meeting to order. We'd like to call the meeting to order. If you could please take a seat. I'm glad that you enjoy talking with one another, but if we could resume the meeting, it's evident of that, of the neighborliness that we all feel in our community. So I want to express, you know, my appreciation for your being here tonight, for those who've spoken and others who've come and who have not necessarily spoken, but are in support of neighbors and friends and maybe have spoken earlier and didn't feel the need to speak tonight. We'll open this to the council for discussion. I remind each of us that this is our business meeting. This is our opportunity as a council to have a discussion on this particular topic. Because of open meeting laws and other limitations, we don't have this opportunity as a group. It's likely that you may hear something that doesn't align with your particular position or opinion, and I just simply want to acknowledge that at this juncture. But as we and staff and others have listened and have resisted, if we felt any inclination to clap or whatever, I just simply ask that if you would respect this opportunity for us to have a discussion as a council with staff about this topic. I'd like to, and if I could begin, and help me to be conscious of time, my fellow council members, you know, I'm personally not going to be able to address this evening all of the very valid points that have been expressed by many of you here tonight. I certainly would like you to know that it doesn't fall on deaf ears, that I haven't come here this evening or previously with some kind of preconceived decision about the future of the golf courses. Admittedly, when I began this journey, I'll say 18 months ago, I certainly brought into that journey some of my own personal opinions. But having walked many of the neighborhoods in this community, literally talked to hundreds, if not thousands, of residents of our community on this topic and on others, I certainly have a unique vantage point or perspective. I want you to know that my professional background values the input of community members. For nearly 20 years, I worked for a small organization in the Park Service called the Rivers Trails and Conservation Assistance Program. The mission of that program is to advocate and assist community-based conservation-recreation work. My activities for that 20 years was working with communities much like Oro Valley. In fact, I did work in 2000 on a project in Oro Valley developing a trails plan for our community. So yes, I have a background in conservation and recreation, with a heavy emphasis on trails and open space planning and so on and so forth. You don't work for the National Park Service for 32 years and not have an appreciation for the wonderful natural heritage that we have, cultural heritage and recreational There's a variety of things that brought us to Oro Valley. For my family and I, my wife Mary Ann and I, we have six children and a daughter. When we first, when we moved to Oro Valley, we had six children. So our seventh was born, in fact, three of our children were born in Tucson. I digress, I apologize. But my point is, is that I came in advance of my family. We could have lived in a variety of places. Like you, we chose Oro Valley. It was largely driven by the schools here, but it was also proximity to the Catalinas, close to home recreation, what for me equated into that I could, in a relatively short time, walk from my front door and get to the outdoor spaces. For many people, you know, if you're not within about three minutes of outdoor access, you just simply don't take advantage of it. So those are some of the reasons. So I recognize, what I'm trying to express here is that I understand that we all share different values, different interests. I recognize and understand that the golf courses are very important to many of you in this room, and maybe a few others, that it's not the highest priority for them. I acknowledge that this is a controversial issue in the sense partly of how it was, its origins, and then just some additional frustrations that I won't go into. So I would like to just say that I recognize, I acknowledge that. I haven't, and I want to repeat, I haven't come in with any precon, if anything, I have felt a little bit like a yo-yo being pulled back in a variety of different directions in regards to this. And at least speaking for myself, and I think this applies to all the council members here at the dais, we all want to do what's best for our community. We may have different ideas of what that best is, but I would hope, I would hope that you wouldn't question that we are trying to do that. And if you do question that, I respect that. There really, and I would just say that, you know, my interest from the outset is to have a, you know, straight talk about the golf courses, and to advocate for giving just, you know, fair and transparent consideration to all options. And I'm going to be honest with you, I'm open to all options. I'm open to the 36, the 27, the 18, what is referred to as the no golf. I prefer open space access, but I'm open to all those options, and you should know Tonight, I have really two interests, and these interests were expressed, you know, this, and to be honest with you, if we wanted to have made a decision as a council, we were sworn in November 7th, whenever the 21st, I suppose we could have, well, I think that was the only council meeting we had in November. We could have made a decision long before now. And I just want to say, a woman came up to me, she has difficulty sleeping at nights because of the uncertainty. It brings me no pleasure to know that there is that kind of angst and frustration, and I understand. But let me just say that we haven't made a decision. We began this conversation back in January with a study session. That was followed in February by a listening session similar to tonight. There was a period of several, several months where we had executive sessions. The gentleman brought up the various contracts and agreements. Those executive sessions were focused around that, to help us understand what our obligations, commitments were. And then, at the end of that, then we made the decision as a council to, with the July 24th meeting, with the meeting tonight, to again kind of bring this conversation back and have this discourse in a public setting. So tonight, what, there are really two things that I have an interest in. And it was, it's been mentioned in a couple different ways, but one is having one set of numbers. And I heard this at the February listening session, just that expression of frustration of there being numbers all over the place. And so I share that interest. I'm frustrated by the fact that we, at least in my view, may not be shared by everybody, that we don't have one set of numbers. So, and what I mean by that is that when I review the pro forma that was provided to us that lays out some of the cost projections by the town, and I put a side-by-side comparison with projections provided by the Budget and Finance Committee, they, they're, in some of the categories, they're relatively close, but in the 36-hole category, they're, they're so far apart that I have a difficult time believing either set of numbers. And so I would hope that...
I'd like to call a point of order, if I may. You just referenced a document that doesn't exist. I, as member of council, have never seen any published numbers from the Finance and Budget Committee. This is the problem with not having one set of numbers. You apparently have your own set of numbers that no one else in the public has seen. So right now, I ask definitively, is this indeed a published set of numbers or not? Because as a council member, I haven't seen it. This is a real problem.
So Ms. Ramos, can you speak to that, please?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Solomon, these documents that were prepared and presented at the last Budget and Finance Commission, they were provided, I believe, to the council shared drive a few weeks ago, and they were shared with council, and so they should be available to mayor and council for their review.
Then why has it been stated, particularly at the last meeting, that we have to wait for the Finance and Budget Committee to make a recommendation when apparently there's already numbers out there and recommendations out there? Where's the transparency here?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Solomon, during our discussions at the Budget and Finance Commission, when the commission members were reviewing their numbers, we did point out that there were some discrepancies and some inaccuracies in some of those numbers, just based on the assumptions that those members had made, associated with not having the detail behind some of the expenses at the community center and the operations of food and beverage, how much that division cost and those operations cost. And so while the numbers displayed revenues for food and beverage being removed, the expenses did not reflect the expenses associated with food and beverage being removed. And so there were some discrepancies in some of those numbers.
So let me understand this. As the one speaker pointed out, we have solid audited numbers that town staff has used to generate the golf course numbers, yet we have members, and they're volunteers, and I appreciate it, on this Finance and Budget Committee who are not coordinating with staff, are not using the audited numbers, and potentially making assumptions totally outside the area of expertise, and they're being thrown out as a second set of numbers? No wonder everyone is confused. I don't see the basis for those numbers. And I don't see the basis for these decisions being delayed based on totally frivolous numbers. We have one set of numbers. They've come from our staff. They're audited numbers. Those numbers were used in the last two budget projections that were almost 100% accurate. So why, I ask you, is some other dubious set of numbers being introduced into this? Is it because people don't like the real audited numbers, and they're searching for a different set of numbers? The numbers are the numbers. Let's get on using our audited staff numbers and financial projections, and let's start making some decisions based upon those numbers.
So, Mr. Mayor, just with all due respect to you, sir, just because I think the question Steve was trying to ask, I'm not sure Stacy heard, is there another spreadsheet that you have from the Budget and Finance Commission that is the basis for the mayor's, that the numbers are in fact very different on the 36-hole? Do we have something officially, and if so, why haven't we seen it? Do we have something officially, and if so, why haven't we seen it?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Rodman, yes, there were documents that were handed out at the last Budget and Finance Commission, and we received PDF versions of those. I don't have the actual working Excel spreadsheets from our members when they prepared those. And so I believe we provided those to council in the shared drive, your shared drive.
Well, I know we had yours, but I don't remember seeing one from finance, Budget and Finance, and maybe that's my fault. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
We can go back and double check that, just to double check.
Okay. So it was my understanding, the Budget and Finance Commission, where these documents were discussed and presented, this was a public meeting, and was that videoed?
Yes, it was.
Yeah. So, and it was my understanding that the financial, the, what was called the various assumptions and spreadsheets, that all that was available on our website? Am I misunderstanding or?
Mr. Mayor, those documents were posted after the meeting to that Budget and Finance Commission meeting pack of materials.
Okay. So they have been posted, and they were presented that evening. So I've just simply taken, and another question that, so Ms. Jacobs, you provided us with materials related to the golf course that included financials and pros and cons, and you provided those to us as a, to help us in this decision-making process. Is that, can you?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, yes, that is, that is correct. I do want to just also kind of piggyback on what our chief financial officer mentioned, which is that we are certainly willing to work with the Budget and Finance Commission to make sure that we are on the numbers, but they had some fairly large mistakes in those presented spreadsheets that I would want to ensure were corrected before there were a fair apples-to-apples comparison.
Yeah, so I think we all have an interest in staff working with the Budget and Finance Commission to address any errors. So they're the first, and so I would encourage, and let me just ask, the numbers that you provided us, that pro forma, and some, can you just, for the audience's sake, can you share with us what materials you've shared with council in helping us to make this decision?
Certainly, I'll try to remember them off the top of my head. Mr. Mayor, members of council, the staff has gone through a very detailed analysis of looking at our numbers. At the end of May, I put together a very lengthy memorandum in partnership with my team, our CFO, staff, as well as Trune, where we analyzed what were the first three options, which is the 36, 27, and 18-hole options, pros and cons. We made the assumptions that were very clearly detailed out. We analyzed the costs for maintaining and investing in infrastructure, from golf infrastructure to what would be natural open space or recreation, open space, followed up with a subsequent memorandum that projected out 10 years. Those costs also added a no golf option using the same criteria that we applied to the prior analysis. And again, I think, and I stated at the, at the session last week, that, as I mentioned, projections are still projections, and they're based on a set of assumptions that if those assumptions change, then it provides an opening to potentially change those, that we use those, our projections were based on, and we follow the same general practice that we do in projecting our forecast, our budget, which is we first start with the actual data, trend analysis, looking at the market, and then we took a look at costs, and of course consulted with our golf advisor, Trune.
And those numbers that you provided us, were they audited by an accounting firm?
Mr. Mayor, the numbers, the pro formas that we gave you are not audited numbers.
Okay, thank you.
The numbers that are audited are the actuals from the previous years.
Okay. Thank you. And so just in looking at them side-by-side, the town's projections, the Budget and Finance projections, acknowledging that there may be some errors in the Budget and Finance Commission's projections, there could be errors in the town's financial projections. I guess the point is, when I look at them side-by-side, it's not one set of numbers. And it would be, and I'm hearing you say, Ms. Jacobs, that there is a willingness by the staff to work with the Budget and Finance Commission to help us arrive at one set of numbers for the various scenarios that have been laid out, the 36 holes, 27 holes, 18 holes. As I've said, in some of the scenarios, it's relatively close, but there are some significant differences, and I'm talking about 1.3 million, 1.4 million different than what, and again, this might be tied to some of the assumptions and so on and so forth, but that would be part of that discussion with the Budget and Finance Commission. So what my hope is, is that we could have a starting point, that we can, so the June 30th, 2019, that would be the year-end for the Trune financials, if we could use that as a starting point, that we, another, just as part of this, is really understanding the acreages. So I've heard a range of acreages. It would be helpful to know exactly what acreage we're talking about when we're talking about the Push Ridge, or the Canyada, or Conquistador. So I would like us to have clarity, an accurate number of acreages. And then I agree that we should remove the food and beverage, the community center utility costs, the Push Ridge, which you've done in your pro forma. I'd like for the gap to be addressed, that there's a three-year gap. That's a time period where there's envisioned capital investments, on and so forth. I think it's important to address the gap. I think you'll find, working with the Budget and Finance Commission, and they working with you, that their format in terms of identifying the revenue categories expense, which basically mirrors the Trune reports, and then under the 36, 27, and 18, it lays out very clearly the various assumptions. For example, membership, I mean, that's a fairly straightforward, we know what membership currently is, we can make an assumption if that membership is going to grow 3%, 5%, whatever it is, but at least come to an agreement as to the assumptions in those different categories. Is there anything that I've said that doesn't seem workable?
Mr. Mayor, we are very happy to work with the Budget and Finance Commission, and I'm certainly happy to listen to any thoughts or ideas that differ from the assumptions that we make, and where there may be points where we differ in opinions. We'll point those out in how we present that information to you as well.
My, I imagine that by working together, staff and the Budget and Finance Commission, that we're going to find much more common ground than differences.
Agreed.
And if there are differences, what I would simply ask is that we acknowledge those differences. Let's put the differences side-by-side. We're really talking about assumptions. And just a brief rationale, if there are significant differences. I anticipate that that not necessarily being the case. Other?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
Just, you know, I, I watched that Budget and Finance, is this on? Yeah. Budget and Finance Commission meeting, and as I understood it, Chairman Beasley and Commissioner Salverson came up with a spreadsheet that the other commissioners, nor the staff, nor Mary Jacobs had seen, began to talk about numbers. There was another commissioner on the phone who had to say several times, "I really can't weigh in because I don't have these documents, so I can't look at them, I can't be part of this." And there was yet a third one, David Newell, who had his own set of numbers that weren't these, and there was another person who wasn't attending. So when you use the comment that the Budget and Finance Commission numbers, I don't think that's accurate. It was two people, Chairman Beasley and Commissioner Salverson, who had these numbers, and they were asking questions. The staff didn't have any time to look at them at all. They were handed to them as they came into the meeting, so they weren't prepared to try to go through them. So I think they were doing the right thing. I think those two people were trying to figure out something, but the Budget and Finance Commission hasn't come up with any set of numbers as a commission. They just haven't. Those two, those two people came up with a spreadsheet, and now maybe, I know that Stacy has tried to get ahold of them. It's vacation time and things, and it hasn't worked out in the 15 days since then to be able to sit down and go through them. But I just, there was no vote on a set of numbers to go to us at all. And at least two of them couldn't see the numbers, one was there and the other was on the phone. So I just want to be clear that that wasn't their recommendation or even their set of numbers. I will reserve some more time later. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Or Vice Mayor Barrett, and then Councilmember Pinya.
I just want to respond to a couple of those things. One, I agree with Councilmember Rodman that there wasn't, you know, any official vote, and the meeting actually got continued to August. And so that's kind of what we're talking about, is that there's still a meeting and that it got continued, being unresolved. And in addition to that, for those who say, "Well, you know, the Budget and Finance Commission should share those things," or should, you know, "get with staff beforehand," that's kind of the purpose of their meeting, and of their meeting needing to be in public, is that is the opportunity for them to get with staff and discuss those things, and the reason it's in public is because that's a public meeting. And so I just want to clarify that, you know, there wasn't any, you know, as far as I'm aware, you know, that that's kind of how it works, is we have to have these open public meetings. When I was on the Planning and zoning commission, you know, that's when I asked staff my questions, was at the Planning and zoning commission meetings and got my answers to that. You know, there wasn't any asking beforehand until I was on the Agenda Committee. So, and then I'd like to also speak to some other things, but I think.
Okay. Councilmember Pinya, and then Councilmember Rodman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since we're talking about numbers and where we're starting, this isn't a startup business. We're now going on the fifth budget season, is it fourth or fifth? Sixth? Oh, okay, sixth budget season. So we're not a startup business. We've got reported and audited numbers. What I'm confused about is what numbers do we need to start with? We have numbers to start with. Is that correct, Stacy? Mary?
Yes.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So if we have these numbers, why is there confusion on the Finance and Budget Commission's part with a spreadsheet with so much confusion if the numbers are there? We have financial statements that are provided, various council meetings as we get our financials reported, Stacy does a presentation, all of the numbers are in there from the food and beverage, golf, you name it, all operations of town. So I don't understand why there is an issue with where do we start? We have numbers, going on six years' worth. And with regards to the assumptions, I would think you could have accurate or more accurate assumptions if you're starting with the foundation of accurate numbers, which are the ones that have been reported and audited. Now, there was a time when this first started, that these numbers, people didn't like them. There were issues with supposedly Trune not providing the right numbers, and I would like Trune management to comment on that, if they would please, here in just a minute. But I guess I'm just confused as to why we're having a problem with where we start. We have the numbers to start with, and from there, we should be able to get, using very qualified individuals such as our town staff, our professionals that work in the industry, we go from there. Now, let's talk about questions from the Finance and Budget Commission. I have attended all the Finance and Budget Commission meetings since the first time it started, except I missed the first one. Every meeting that I was there, there was, we were able to hear, there was commentary that Ms. Lemos would ask, "Do you have any questions?" This was asked of the Finance and Budget Commission. "Do you have any questions?" There was even a meeting where there were going to be follow-up questions that could be sent to Ms. Lemos for her to be able to be ready for a council meeting. So we need to get this straight, and we owe it to the citizens here. Enough is enough. We're going back and forth. There's angst among this group of people and the ones that were there on the 24th. And I commend our Finance and Budget Commission because quite honestly, I think they've gotten put in the middle of this, and they were trying really hard to do something right. So for me personally, I feel like we have numbers to start with. I would agree, we need to get one set of numbers, but I think we know where to start from. And then I think we can get a good set of assumptions moving forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Rodman, and Councilmember Solomon, and then Vice Mayor Barrett.
To the point that was just made, that the commissioners couldn't have shared these numbers with the staff before the meeting because of some Open Meetings Act, simply I don't believe is accurate. Plain and simple, you can always share with staff. You can't share with each other more than two others, but you can always share with staff. So if you actually want to solve a problem, whether it be P and Z, which both Vice Mayor Barrett and I served on, you know, you get the staff involved as soon as you have an issue. What am I understanding? What am I not understanding? What other documents should I be looking at? Here's what I'm going to, I'm thinking about. Am I right? Am I wrong? Where am I missing? But I want you to know, that's what we want to talk about. So that you have an opportunity to understand and give staff an opportunity to know where you're coming from. And in this case, it was a whole spreadsheet of numbers that they weren't even sure about, the two people that were presenting it. And they said they hid behind, "Well, it's an open meeting thing." I'm sorry, I shouldn't say hid behind. Again, I do believe they were trying to do the right thing. But they were either given wrong information, or they were wrong about an open meeting. It would have been fair for staff to know what they were talking about and be ready to discuss it. Instead, we actually had a meeting that had to be continued because nobody could deal with these spreadsheets, including the two that couldn't see them or weren't there, and one who didn't understand them all. So that's a problem, and we need to stop it. It's one of the reasons why we're doing what we're doing tonight, because if they had made a recommendation at their last meeting, which maybe they would have had they shared the information with staff, maybe they could have brought these things together and then had the information that they needed to make a recommendation, we could have been talking about voting tonight. Instead, we're waiting for September 4th because they have a meeting on August somebody 20, I think. So that's an issue. That's what happened, that's how it happened. It's a new commission, there's folks that are learning on this, and to Councilmember Pinya's point, we've put them in a tough position. Some of us have looked at this for two and a half years, and others have looked at it for two and a half years before that, and we still haven't got an answer. And we put them in and said, "Oh, look, you've got two or three meetings, figure it out and give us a recommendation." That's not fair either. But as a result, we're stalled, we're having disagreements on things we didn't have to have disagreements on with the Finance and Budget. So I think that's important. Let me, do you want to go on something, or can I talk about?
Why don't we stay within this topic for the moment?
Fine, happy.
I think Councilmember Solomon, and then Vice Mayor Barrett.
Hey, I disagree somewhat with Bill. I think we have the numbers, and when we say audited numbers, we're talking about the actual numbers and financial performance. Those are the numbers that are audited and then are used to make projections. Those were the numbers used in the last two-year budget projections, including golf and the community center, and they were right on the last two years. So it's reasonable to assume that the same people, using those same numbers in the projections we have now, are accurate based on the assumptions. It's already been stated, the quote Finance and Budget Committee numbers, which aren't Finance and Budget Committee numbers, it's two out of the five members who decided on their own, independent of staff and the rest of the committee members, to come up with their own numbers. The few numbers they've already reviewed with staff, staff showed that they had major errors. They had left out major income sources that skewed the numbers. That'll happen if you only include expenses and not income. Anyone that's ever balanced a checkbook knows that. Not in one case did these individuals find an error in the town's number. If they did, we'd probably have a pretty good lawsuit against the major financial companies that audit our numbers. So I don't think the Finance and Budget Committee is going to find any errors in the town's- town staff's numbers. I'm not even sure that's really their job, while they should be trying to second-guess our professional staff and independent auditors on numbers. So in my opinion, we have the numbers. The numbers have shown conclusively beyond the shadow of doubt that maintaining the 36 holes of golf from a financial perspective is the absolute way to go. Lowest cost, best economic return, less disruption in property values, and we'll discuss all that later. But I want to stick on the subject we're on, and that is the numbers. Because some things were brought up last week, and I have a few questions for staff, and that had to do with golf throughout Arizona. Now, we have two memos from town staff in response to a council inquiry, and these were both from Vice Mayor Barrett. Any council member can ask staff, "We'd like more information." And the first memo was May 23rd, where it was asked for similar-sized communities in Arizona. How many similar-sized communities in Arizona have golf courses? And the answer basically were three, three communities. Then, on July 17th, a request came in, "Well, wait a second. That's not a large number." So Vice Mayor Barrett asked about, "What about all the communities in Arizona?" Well, staff went through and they looked, and they found that all the communities, there were another seven cities that owned golf courses. So that's 10.
Yeah, 10.
Now, you're quoted as saying you did a study of 25 other cities.
I'm sorry.
And I'm assuming that Logan's quote is correct. Maybe it's not. So once again, do you have your own independent study that the rest of us are not aware of? Or were you referring to these two that were seven and three, which is 10? So how did it get to 25, and how did it get to be more than, that we're paying more than the entire state? Because if we're going to have numbers, it'd be nice if they were shared with everybody.
Vice Mayor Barrett.
I believe I said it's 25 courses. So for example, the city of Tucson has five 18-hole courses. The city of Phoenix, I think, has eight, or was it seven and a half if you count the nine holes? I don't have it right in front of me at this moment. But so there were several cities who had that. And first I looked for, I asked the staff to look for cities from 20,000 to 80,000 people because I figured that was kind of a similar size, give or take on either range, and they said there were 20 cities. Three of them had golf courses. And then I said, "How about cities bigger than that?" Because what I was kind of trying to get at is, you know, what should, for example, 18 holes of golf cost in the state of Arizona, where we live in a desert, you know? So that's kind of was the analysis that I was trying to get at there. And so it's 25 courses, and that's as they go by 18-hole courses. It's in 10 different cities. And then I also included in that the other cities that do not have golf, when I say all the cities over 20,000 people in the state of Arizona. Although, a lot of the really large cities that are population-dense do have golf courses, so those are included in that. But I want to get back to the numbers just a little bit, and I also feel uncomfortable with the idea that we're, you know, putting the Budget and Finance Commission, who are just good people in our community, who are volunteers, kind of in the middle of this. So I kind of want to address just a couple of concerns that I have with the projections that have been made. One, I think there's some confusion here between what are the audited numbers and what are the projections for the future. So we all agree on the audited historical numbers. One of the challenges with the projections that we have for the future is that so far they don't match with our audited historical numbers in terms of how we're going to get there. And so that has been my question of staff, and one of the questions I asked them was, could we have some more information about what it is that are the assumptions that go into this? Because every financial projection is only as good as the assumptions, and I want to feel confident that I'm comfortable with those assumptions. And add those assumptions based on the history that we know, as Councilmember Pinya pointed out, that we have that history. And I want to make sure that I feel comfortable, that I feel like those assumptions are something that can get us to the numbers that have been projected. And it's important for me to feel confident about that, to be able to make a decision. One concern I have is that the 36-hole option starts in three years, presumably at 2023, in terms of its projections. So in terms of getting from here to there, I feel like I need, you know, some more answers in terms of that. Regarding the 18-hole option, for example, when there's a 10-year projection, it's saying year one, year two, year three, year four, but it's starting golf in year one after the improvements and repurposing of open space in year one at the time of the repurposing. So presumably, the open space is looking at, you know, 2020 to 2030, and the golf is looking at 2023 to 2033. And so, you know, I'd like that resolved a little bit, so that when we talk about 10 years, we're arriving at the same location in terms of the 10 years. In response to my question about assumptions, I did get back some spreadsheets from Trune, and the staff has said that, you know, they'll add to that, and that's, I appreciate that. One concern I have in the 18-hole is that, it appeared to me as I was going through it, that they're assuming that all the rounds that are currently played by members, essentially all the rounds, less about 600, would go away completely if we had the 18-hole option. So right now, we have about 17,000 or so rounds being played by members. And then the 18-hole option assumes that we only have revenue from the rounds that are, that are currently being kind of what we would call outside play, coming in on the other course that's not dedicated to members. Well, my feeling is that it's likely that if you had 17,000 rounds that are being played, that there would be some additional demand on the 18-hole option, and at least some of those rounds would be captured. Not at 100%, I'm sure, but not at a very minimal percentage. So those are some of, you know, the concerns that I have regarding some of those numbers is just the way the dates go. I just want to have the assumptions clearly in front of me and have us be able to get from here where we are with the audited historical numbers that we all agree on to the projections, and make sure that those, that the idea of these projections is where we're really going to end up. I haven't made a decision on this issue yet. I will say that the, one of my concerns with the 36-hole option being presented to us is that it has this large initial capital investment associated with it. And I struggle with the concept of putting $4 million into an irrigation system that will, you know, save minimal amounts of money moving forward and things. So for me, you know, that's one of my concerns with the 36-hole option in terms of getting to those projections and looking at those financials. So, and regarding the other courses, you know, I did ask staff to do some analysis about what makes those courses successful. That was one of the questions that I asked. And part of that is because I want to be successful. And so, you know, I said, if, you know, what would we, what would we find out about how more successful municipal golf courses operate? Do they have more rounds of golf played, lower utility costs, lower labor costs? What would it take for our golf courses to become more like a typical Arizona municipal golf course? And what are the primary differences between our courses and theirs? So I agree that that's something to look into, and it is information that I asked for at the same time that I asked this research to be performed. So that's where I'm at at the moment, and I'm not ready to make a decision on that. And I'd like some more answers about those assumptions that go behind those projections, and I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Mayor, can we get answers maybe to her two questions? I think staff probably, since they did the numbers and projections, the two that Vice Mayor Barrett asked earlier, the gap period, I think was one of them, and there was a second, perhaps you could answer those?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Barrett, regarding the gap, I, the reason why we didn't include the information in that gap year is because there are some pretty significant policy assumptions that need to be made unless the council is prepared to give me those assumptions this evening to help make those about, for example, whether or not during that construction or planning process, we continue to have golf, we continue to have membership. So that, that makes a very big difference in revenue projections for us and profitability for the golf course. If you're prepared to just have us project what we would recommend, that would be okay, and we can certainly do that. I didn't feel that it was appropriate to make that projection at this point. But for example, if there was going to be an 18-hole option, there's a planning period involved that would take some time, and then there's a construction period. So do we offer golf in the meantime? Do we continue to have a membership for 36 holes? Those are some pretty significant policy decisions that impact greatly the, how those numbers play out. But we're willing to make some of those assumptions and simply state them, and then we can, we can refine and add those extra two years. So this is, this is the third year following, following construction, or the third full operational, so we assume probably a two-year construction period, and we'll make those assumptions and make those recommendations on how we would suggest a decision of that nature being implemented.
Okay.
Sure. I want to get your second question, too.
Okay. Yeah, but can I just quick follow up? So, you know, I would just like to see any repurposing costs or any open space costs aligned to those same timetables. Because if repurposing, right now, we're looking at, you know, the first five years would be more expensive as the repurposing is being performed, and then cheaper maintenance after that. So it doesn't seem like you can say, "Well, we're taking out the construction costs for golf, but we're including all of the construction costs for the repurposing in the same 10-year period." So I just would like to see some consistency there, to have those be a little bit more apples-to-apples comparisons. And I feel confident that you can do that because the numbers that were sent to me had the next three years in them. So I feel confident that we could get there. But that is something I'd like to see.
And I think the other question was something about the 18 holes began in year one and the 36 began in year three.
Mm-hmm.
So can we talk about that a little bit? Why, if that's the case, why was, why, what were we doing, and why did we assume that?
So just, can I just, just as a reminder to council, because Mr. Cohen is eyeing me, each of the council members need to be recognized by the chair. And admittedly, it's not my style. I appreciate the more free-form, but if we could conform to that, then I'll do my best of my peripheral vision to acknowledge each of you. So Vice, or not, Councilmember Rodman's question. I don't know what your question was.
No, no, I already said it.
I know you did, so maybe ask it again.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Rodman, I'd have to go back and take a look. I don't have the numbers directly in front of me, but we'll get a response back. I don't think that was our intention, so, but I don't have our 15 Excel spreadsheet working documents in front of us at this moment to be able to refer back to.
Sure. Thank you.
Councilmember Solomon.
The subject of capital improvement costs, which is brought up. Now, isn't a big part of the capital improvement cost for 36 holes of golf, the replacement of the irrigation system that's 30-plus years old, is in poor shape?
Yes, sir.
Now, weren't the estimates given to us that that capital improvement would result in a net return in investment over, was it five years, to pay for itself in water savings?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Solomon, no, it would not, it wouldn't pay for itself in water savings. We estimated conservatively, it could be better. We estimated in our pro forma is about a 15% savings in water, and the reason why we were a little conservative is because Mother Nature sometimes has a say on whether or not it's going to be sustainable.
But we'd be looking at saving 15% year after year after year in water, so that capital improvement or capital investment has a 15%, well, 15% water savings return. The other thing I'd like to question and correct me if I'm right, is the capital investment costs for the revegetation or repurposing only included landscaping, did not include any type of grading. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Solomon, yes. Our estimates were for revegetation only.
Only. And also, am I, there's two points to that, is we had shown the really pretty pictures of what the revegetation or a path would look like, and I think we might have the color ones in here. And, excuse me, I'm sorry, maybe they're not in this version. Yes. When we look at these, wouldn't you say the coverage is close to 100% vegetation? And weren't our numbers based on very minimal planting? They would not at all look like this?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Solomon, our estimates were based on two, really two data inputs. One was information that we received from WLB. They provided us with actually, actual bid tabs from a project that I'm sure folks drive by all the time, which is the Big Wash revegetation area at the Oro Valley Marketplace. And they, that cost at that time, about 12 or 13 years ago, was, I believe, somewhere around $18,000, $18,000, $19,000 an acre. And then also without grading, because they had that done on another, through their other vendor. The other was, we reached out to a firm to give us some estimates on what that would cost, and that estimate was about $15,000 to $20,000, but it was a very specific, you know, that would be this many trees and this many plants and that sort of thing. And it was, it was on the sparse side, but the purpose of the photos was simply to display, again, what I mentioned, the art of the possible.
Okay. So I just want to make sure we're clear. That capital improvement cost is, we already know, we're not going to get what's in the picture. That's like whenever you hire a landscaper to do your yard, and you see two little plants and one little stick tree, and you go, "What the heck are we talking about here?" So just from that perspective, we probably need to double those costs. But what's more concerning is grading, and this is my business. To do grading, we talk about cubic yards, or three feet by three feet by three feet. And just to move one cubic yard of dirt on a site to readjust grading, if you get a screaming deal, it's about $4 per yard because of the equipment involved. If you have 135 acres of golf courses, you're trying to repurpose, it's very reasonable to assume that at a minimum, you're going to have to be moving one yard of dirt at every spot averaged out over that acre. That comes out to $20,000 an acre, $19,000 something, you know, rounded off. Right there, that's another doubling of these capital improvements costs for even your basic landscaping. Not to mention now, if we try to set a park setting, or if we try to put a playground in, this council approved a $1.7 million playground for an on-hunt town site, and the reason it's so high is, well, we need parking, we need lights, we need this, we need grading, we need drainage. Same thing would apply on a golf course. So don't expect to see multiple playgrounds, these expenses. So if we're talking about capital investments, once again, overall, the 36 holes is about the minimal. Because right now, we're saying 36 holes, 3.8 to 5.1 million. We're saying for no golf option, 2 million to 8 million, but we already know, we left out grading, and we didn't put in enough plants. So we're looking potentially at 8 to 12 to 15 million dollars to take a golf course to turn it into a desert. That's where your big capital improvement is.
Thank you. I'd ask you to hold your applause and respect the fact that this is a business meeting. Thank you.
So I just want to make sure that if we're starting to revise these numbers, that we accurately reflect, and that's where the greatest uncertainty is, is in the costs. But we know some minimal costs, and I think we're, and not to staff's fault, because you did acknowledge in your footnotes, no grading, and it was sparse landscaping. But let's not show pictures of lush landscaping when we're only pricing sparse landscaping and no grading, which obviously has to be done.
Councilmember Nicholson.
Okay. I just want to talk about a couple of things about the pro formas and then the audited financials. When we first bought the golf course, it wasn't audited what our pro formas were. The pro formas were not audited, and we saw where it got us to here. I agree that the audited financials for the history are good, and predicting it out... I agree that the audited financials for the history are good, and predicting it out may be good, but the hard part is, there's several different options of no golf, 18 holes, 27 holes, and there are some unknowns there. And I do worry about some of those pro formas into the future. And I want to talk a little bit about the Budget and Finance Commission. During the interviews, it was me, Stacy Lemos, Rhonda, and Joe. And before we started out, we said, we had parameters. We want someone with a good, strong financial background. And when we did the interviews, I think all of us would agree, we were extremely impressed with the qualified candidates we had. I mean, I don't want to talk about too much of their resumes, but like Fortune 500 people, or Fortune 500 companies, board of directors type people. I think they all are doing a real honest, good job. They don't have any financial interests in the town or anything like that. I mean, that was one of the questions we had. So I mean, I think they're really trying to do it out of the goodness of their heart. And one of the people, David Newell, he didn't have a financial background, which we all said we absolutely wanted to, but I was actually the one to push for him the most, because he was a MIT grad, and I just thought he was a brilliant person, just like everyone up here. I think staff, a lot of the citizens that come up here, I'm surprised to hear what kind of people we have in our citizenry. And this Budget and Finance Commission is no slouch. Like, they're some of the best of our community, and I mean, I hope we respect them and their opinions. And we all do want to get one set of numbers. And I'd say, like, the one thing is, like, you know, we're talking about qualified candidates, like, these people that worked in these giant corporations, these really important positions, like, I think they have good quality experience, and they, most, most all of them, except for one, has a good financial background. And I think we can trust them to try and help guide us to square away some of the questions that we do have. We don't want to make a decision without really having a good understanding of where the numbers are, and we want to try and make the right decision for everyone, the whole community.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Barrett, and then Councilmember Jones-Ivy.
Thank you.
I just wanted to address Councilmember Solomon's point about the uncertainty in the cost, and suggest that perhaps it would be helpful if we hired a qualified landscape architect to come and look at, you know, just a couple of representative holes, and provide us with a little more certainty. Because I also feel like there is some uncertainty in what's going on there, and maybe it would be, would be helpful for the council to have a little more certainty regarding that, regarding grading and things like that, in terms of looking at and comparing these different options. So I'll just offer that as a suggestion.
Councilmember Jones-Ivy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm generally the most quiet sitting up here, not as verbose as a lot of my fellow council members. But I've had, I agree with my council members that there's been an issue with numbers. One of the big reasons why I've not made a decision is because I feel very uncertain about them. So Mary, thank you for being willing to work with the finance, the Budget and Finance Committee to get us some better numbers. I also found it very confusing, as I looked at the different options, and the years, the first year, second, on out to 10, that there, the figures just didn't seem to make a lot of sense to me, and I do understand the assumptions that were, that were made. One of my main concerns is that we make the right decision. Because this is going to have the most financial impact on our community. We've never run a municipal golf course, and even though Trune has, I'm not real comfortable with the numbers that I get from them always, because for five years, they projected numbers that meant, we ended up with a $9 million loss. I recall asking Rob, and is there a representative here from Trune? Okay. I remember asking Rob at our first meeting if the golf courses have ever been profitable, and that was prior to our obtaining them, and he said, no. So that is not a bill that I can unring. So in my mind, I've not made a final decision, but my decision will be based on how much golf we can afford. Your concerns are not lost on me, I've heard them. But I want you to understand that making the best decision for our community is where my heart lies. And I will make a final decision and share that with you. I thank you for your time this evening. It's important that I hear what your concerns are, they're not lost on me. So any decision I make going forward, I will take your concerns along with me.
Mr. Mayor.
Just one moment. So Councilmember Rodman, and then Councilmember Penya.
We've had comments that the people haven't made up their minds. And Mike, standing, our town clerk, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a request from two council members to place on tonight's agenda a direction to staff to initiate rezoning of the golf courses. Because it was within 12 days, it had to be unanimous on the agenda committee, which I happen to be part of, and I said, no, not in a matter of few days, and putting staff in that position to have to respond and give us background, et cetera. So it's now on the September 4th agenda. So if, in fact, minds are not made up, why are we being asked to initiate staff to do a rezoning of the golf course? An argument could be made, well, I want to, it may be, and I don't know, but it may be, well, I want to make a permanent open space. Well, you don't need to do that if you're not going to close golf courses, because it's already being used as golf courses. So the only reason you need to change the zoning to that is if you plan to do something other than the current 36. So I, that's public knowledge, it's not an inside baseball thing, but I have a question in my mind about whether or not there isn't something, because there's no other reason. When we bought, when Town bought, and none of us here were on the council when that happened, one of the reasons they gave was that they wanted to protect the 340 acres in the center of town, because HSL, in fact, said they had a buyer for $3 million. And instead, they said, we would rather the town have it, and the town have control of it. It's a very valuable piece of land in the center of town, and while we can make a little bit more money, we can't and won't close on this deal unless we're not, we don't have the golf courses. So you don't have a lot of time. You know, we need to, we need to get there. How it happened, when it happened, could have been done different, we could chase that ball. But the fact of the matter is, I didn't realize they needed to protect this land from ourselves. I thought it was some other outfit that might want to come in and do something. And what I'm hearing is, well, no, we need to protect it because, well, why would we do it otherwise, if we're not thinking about closing golf holes? Somebody can answer that if they'd like to. But, you know, we've said this again and again. We thought we, three of us thought we made a decision a year and a half ago. To operate 36 holes, do bonds, do the irrigation that was needed, $3.8 million. And Trune indicated, which is another issue down the line, indicated that they, in fact, could do everything we needed to do, and flatten the tees, fix the bunkers, and fix the irrigation, do all the things that needed to be done within that $3.8 million. I questioned them, questioned them again, made them come back. They've said, in fact, that was the case. So we said, okay. And our town manager and staff, and Trune, indicated that they felt the changes in the overlook and the fitness building, the community center, needed to be done. So we made it, we did a vote. We thought for the first time in five years, four years, I guess, at that point, or three and a half, that maybe we finally did, we had the headwinds that were put away, and we were going to be able to stabilize that whole thing, and we'd start to get members back and a few other things. But this is democracy, so we had an election, and one of the things that the four ran on initially was closing golf courses. It changed, but that was the beginning part, because there was a meeting with the Oro Valley Women's Republican Club, in which the answer was, yes, we're going to close the golf courses. It changed, it changed as pressure happened, so I don't know what it is now. But the fact is, those, that's history, and that's fact. We have now numbers again and again and again. This isn't about numbers anymore. We've chased numbers for four and a half years, or five, whatever it is. We've chased numbers. Every time we get someplace, somebody says, no, 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 we've got to look at this rabbit hole. So then we go down that rabbit hole, and it takes us another three months to get someplace, or four months. The fact is, when you put all the numbers together for all of the different options, you're not going to see a whole lot of difference. You just aren't. It may be that this projection is a little off, or that projection is a little off, or this assumption doesn't turn out to be right, but they're all as likely to be right as anybody else. So then, it's not about numbers, it's about, it's about the town. It's about promises made. It's about protecting property values. It's about doing the right thing for our town. If we've heard last week and this week what this complex means to this town, and to not just the people in this room, or the 720 that were here last week, or the ones that were here in January, or the ones that were here in February, is because it is the right thing to do, for all the reasons we've heard it. And we can argue about it until we're blue in the face of whether it's $10 or $15, it doesn't really matter. The whole thing is 5% of our budget, the whole thing. So we are sitting here, and if I'm looking from the outside, I'm saying, what are they doing? It's 5% of their budget in total. So somebody said in the thing, well, you're going to argue about $500,000. Well, I'm not sure we're arguing about $500,000, maybe. But I don't think it is about the numbers. I think we've proven that we can afford any of the numbers. So now it's about what's right for the town, and what's right for the people that live around the golf courses, the people use them, the ability to have stability, so that they have stability in their home values, the ability to have stability, so we get more members, so that, in fact, people will invest themselves into this. And we can chase these numbers till we're blue in the face. I'm sorry that I went past your numbers thing, but I think we've done that for much, far too long. And then, once we get the Budget and Finance Commission's numbers trued up, and I think we'll see that they're very close, we need to get this done. We need their recommendation in October, or, excuse me, August 20th, and we need to make a decision on September 4th. And we need to make a decision for the entire town, and not about, you know, promises that were made, or campaigns that were done. I understand why people do that, though, you win elections. I mean, people, you campaign on issues, and I get that, and I don't begrudge that at all. But I think we're past that now. Now we're into governing, and everything we've heard in the last six months has been why this makes sense for our town, and that we can, in fact, afford it. For now, thank you.
Councilmember Penya.
Thank you. I don't know how to follow that. I would like to have the representative from Trune speak to some of these numbers, and I don't want to get hung up on getting into the weeds, but I would like to have a little bit of discussion on it, because I think it's important, because it's been said that, you know, they've been, and numbers have been inflated, things are not what they should be. So I would like to hear, and I'd like to hear Ms. Jacobs, your opinion on these projections and assumptions. Because I'm going to go back to what Councilmember Rodman said, we're going to chase these numbers all day long. We have spent $50,000 on the original consultant's report, which, to some degree, lays out, and I respect what Councilmember Barrett said, that maybe we get a landscape architect, but part of that consultant's report, the recommendations were based on looking at different options of doing something with the course. So that was already included in some of this, and that's from an expert's opinion. So I really would like to hear why you think these projections and assumptions would be any different, and why you stick by them. So who would like to go first?
Mr. Mayor.
So.
Please.
So Tom, you're welcome to, can you keep your comments to five minutes, or?
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
You're going to speak, Ms. Jacobs?
And Councilmember Penya. Rob Demore, who is the president of the Prive Division of Trune, is really the more appropriate person to answer some of these questions. He happens to be away on vacation with his family this week. He was here, as you know, last week, but because of the short timeframe, wasn't able to address some of these questions. He has committed to attending the meeting on August 20th with the Budget and Finance Commission. And I would be happy to ensure, you know, if there's some simple questions. Tom is a member of the team. Rob is really the major architect of many of the, of the projection pro formas for us, and so I just don't want to put Tom Mead, our general manager, on the spot for things that maybe he was not necessarily part of putting those spreadsheets together.
Sure. So my next question, then, is why do you support these projections and assumptions? And the reason I ask that is to Councilmember Rodman's point, there were three of us, Councilmember Rodman, Solomon, and myself, supported the 36-hole option when we had a previous council. And pretty much, the same result was keeping the 36-hole, allowing the HSL organization to work with the homeowners, to have the push ridge course, go back to however they figured that out, have a 36-hole option. So in that time, that we have not made a decision, it's been about, what, $225,000 a year in operating costs that the town has absorbed in the last two budgets? So that's about, what, $450,000, $50,000 in a consultant's report? That's $500,000 right there. So I would like to know why you stand by these projections and assumptions two to three years later.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Penya, let me just kind of make some foundational comments about the assumptions and how we put them together. As I mentioned, this wasn't done in a vacuum. We did it as a team. We really sat down, we looked at all of the numbers, and we didn't come, we didn't go to the table with any preconceived notion either, just as the council's really looking at all of the options. I sort of equate it like a, like a science experiment. You have a hypothesis, you think you know, maybe, but then you do the experiment, and you run the numbers, and you do the analysis. And our job, of course, is really to do that as objectively as we can, so that you can have as objective information as you can, and not back into anything. Some of the, probably a couple of the major things I want to point out, that seems a little, it seems like, you know, an 18-hole golf course would, would, you know, have significantly less, and it is less, it does, it does cost less to operate, and you can see that from the pro forma. But there are some fixed costs that are the same, whether you have 36 holes, 45 holes, or whether you have 18 holes. For example, you know, you have a superintendent, no matter how many holes that you have, you know, you have, you have certain foundational costs that just don't, that don't change. And with a membership course, we get a significant amount of revenue. That is, that's rainproof revenue. We get it every month, whether it's bad weather, where everybody, whether they can, you know, play or not. The other thing that is, that is unique here in Arizona particularly, is that we get the bulk of our revenue in about a four- to five-month period. So when the holes shrink, the number of slots available per, you know, per day to play shrink, and they're in just that window, then you have, then you really have to look at what that limitation is. Because in general, and people do still play in the summertime, but they don't play as often here. We rely on our winter visitors and that sort of thing. So as I mentioned, you know, we have to start somewhere, and we have to identify, you know, it's very clear, and I did forget to mention in my earlier comments, that another foundational piece that we used in our analysis was the data from the National Golf Foundation report. They did a very detailed analysis, and while, while we didn't agree with some of their assumptions, some of their numbers were good. We used some of their, in fact, our numbers for repurposing were fairly consistent with what it is that they recommended as well. So those were kind of those data points that we picked. But, so, you know, so really kind of wrapping all of those numbers together, we, you know, we also rely on Trune as our, as our expert in knowing the market, and, you know, operating a number of courses here in the Tucson area, they've been in the Tucson region for a long time. They're the ones who monitor the trends, and they, you know, they can see where we are. We've gained in our day play by about 10% over the last two years. And so we use those projections and that trajectory to determine what is a reasonable amount of day play. amount of day play. And while I can't, as an example, speak to the specific issue that Vice Mayor Barrett made on the assumptions of day play for our members, that's something I would want Rob Demore to address, and I'll make sure that he does specifically. And those are some of the specific questions. We have to rely on outside expertise in the golf field to advise us, just like we have an investment advisor. It's not our core function, it's not our core aptitude. And so we rely on experts like that in order to advise us. And Troone certainly has a track record in Arizona and also nationally, to know the market and to be able to advise us accordingly. So, but as I mentioned earlier, you know, we welcome the opportunity to have these conversations in more detail with the Budget and Finance Commission, so that they can ask some of these questions about, well, I don't understand, why did you do it this way and not that way? And that they can hear the answer to that question. And they can come to their own conclusions. That's fine. But they're not, they're based, they're based on reason, they're based on fact, they're based on, we're also relatively conservative. I would rather under-promise and over-deliver than I would be in the position that we are looking back five years ago, when the projections were very much overly optimistic. That is not a position I want us to be in. And me, as the one who will be held accountable for these numbers, I don't want to be in that position either. So the numbers need to be, you know, fair, supportable, conservative, and attainable. And I believe that's what we prepared.
Okay. Thank you. And then one of the options, or one of the kind of provisions of those projections and assumptions originally was to allow HSL and the Homeowners Association to have some conversation, and also working with the town. Would you still agree that that's something that you would recommend?
The Homeowners Association.
With the Push Ridge?
Oh, excuse me.
With the nine holes, I'm sorry.
The, as you know, last year, I recommended that the town go ahead and just continue golf, and offer HSL the opportunity to lease it. I haven't changed my recommendation in that regard. That's obviously a council policy decision to do, to do that. The last conversation about this specifically was with the HSL in the fall, when we were headed in that direction. And they, and we simply hadn't moved forward with consummating the deal. I feel that it is something that they would still move forward with, if given the opportunity, if that's the direction the council wants to go in.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Solomon, and then Vice Mayor Barrett.
Question first for Troone. How many courses or holes worldwide do you manage, and what's your gross income from managing those holes?
I cannot answer that question. I don't have that specific information. That is certain, that is something that our manager Jacobs had mentioned, that was certainly much more Rob's wheelhouse, so I.
We'll pass that question on to Rob Demore.
What's the ballpark? I mean, do you manage 10 courses, or do you manage 1,000 courses? I'm looking order magnitudes here.
Two hundred.
I'm sorry?
Two hundred.
Two hundred. And, okay. And then what's?
I don't know if that's the correct answer. I would rather defer that to Mr. Demore.
Do you have an idea of the annual, you know, revenue at all? Once again, ballpark?
We'll have to, we'll have to get that information. I couldn't look that up on a website or anything. Their annual revenue would be.
The point I'm trying to get to is, what do we pay Troone? What's our contract amount to Troone? They actually get paid for managing?
The management fee right now is $120,000 a year, $10,000 a month.
So I would assume that that is probably like less than 1% of the company's gross income? My understanding is that they're such a large operation worldwide? And all I'm getting to is, I've heard these comments made very recklessly, that why would we listen to Troone? There are, you know, it's, it's in their best interest to keep this course open, it's in their best interest to provide numbers that make them look good. And I'm looking at $120,000 a year? I mean, your landscaper, your HOA is making more money than that. So, you know, that's what disturbs me, is when people try to inject something to that effect, is they're our hired experts. That's where we get our numbers from. And to imply that the numbers they give us are no good, unless you have proof, and if you do have proof, bring it forward, because that's a serious issue. But these innuendos about, oh, Troone's numbers are bad, Troone's in it for self-gain, and then you look at what we pay them, is so minimal. I mean, I'm surprised they even want to manage our golf courses, particularly in the current environment. But a few other financial points here. And I agree totally with Bill, on the one hand, of course, is, you know, look, these numbers can be moving around, but the amount of movement or standard deviation is small. But let's look at some of the other major factors here, the property values. We know for a fact, this is not speculation, that, and it's affected some of you folks in the audience, your property values have dropped significantly. Why? The uncertainty, of course, just like the stock market will drop significantly with uncertainty. Anybody who's looking for a home, and goes in the backyard and goes, oh, look at the backyard, there's open space, there's a golf course, you know? And then they're told, well, we don't know what it's going to be tomorrow. Obviously, that takes away value. Now, it's been said, and I'm a builder and developer in Aura Valley, I build homes on the golf course, I build homes up against open space, I charge premiums for the golf course lots, for the open space lots. Are they the same? Hard to say. Golf course probably a little more, simply because there's fewer golf course lots than open space lots. But the key is the transition. If you want to take a golf course lot and convert it to an open space or a park lot, what happens in that transition? Total uncertainty. You are not going to be able, you are going to lose your property value of your golf course premium, is going to go down, and maybe start to revert once the process is completed. And if it does, you're not sure whether it'll get back up to the same value. Therein lies the problem. How long is that process? We already heard, it'd probably be at least a year, just to hire someone, get a study, get some estimates, discuss it in council, go through the public hearing process, then decide on what option we want, put out an RFP, get back bids, look at the bids, accept the bid, and then start construction and finish. And by the time you're done, you're looking three to five years, easily. Particularly if you want the plant to mature a little. So in those three to five years, you're going to have a dramatic decrease in property values. And once again, not just on the golf course. If there's a home on a golf course, and I'm across the street, and these folks paid $400,000 for their home because it was on a golf course, and I have the identical home, and I paid $350,000 because it wasn't, when their home goes down to $350,000, mine's not going to stay at $350,000, it's going to go down too. And then it's going to go down a block away. So what's been expressed to us is, first off, we know there's going to be a decrease in property values, and it's going to be in effect throughout the community. Second, we've been told by the fire district, and by the water utility, that if we close the golf course, every single resident is going to see an increase in fees and taxes. So we're looking at a decision here that will decrease property values, there's no arguing that. If you want to argue that five years later, maybe they'll come back, okay, I'll grant you that, I don't know. But you can't compare instantaneous change from a golf course to open space. In fact, once again, we don't have to speculate. People here are liveliness. And that's part of the problem, is they can't do anything with their homes right now. And they're not going to be able to do anything with their homes until a decision is made. And if the decision is to make a change, they're going to be stuck for three to five years without being able to do anything with their homes. So we have not just the financial projections, which once again, they're showing the 36-hole course is a very real option. We know property values are going to go down. We know everyone, every single person in this community, you could live 15 miles away from the golf course, never golf, your fees are going to go up for fire protection and for the water utility. We also know that the golf course provides economic benefits. How many people have said they moved here for the golf course? How many, look at the, we have 200 and something members, they don't play the thousands and thousands of rounds of golf a year. They're not out there 24 hours, seven days a week. I mean, we have a lot of non-members playing golf, a lot of people from out of the area, in the metro Tucson area, from Arizona and from out of state playing. They come here, they stay here, they spend money, they generate sales taxes. It's an economic benefit. Like people said, it's a hallmark of this community, it's part of the history of this community. So their financial reasons all point to, why would you change your golf course? And that's the bottom line, like you said, why? Why are we even doing this? What started this whole process? It was saying, oh, golf, somebody made the claim years ago, golf is bankrupting the town. But that person didn't bother to count any of the income. We see the financials, the town's run surpluses of two-plus million dollars every year for eight years. We're in excellent financial shape, as was pointed out. This is less than 5% of the town budget. And we're looking at numbers now that are saying, we'll be at a million dollars a year for golf. We spend $600,000 to $700,000 a year for the pool. Not everyone uses the pool. I know people that want a skate park. Why don't we drain the pool, let them use it as a skate park at night? Okay? Just like we should let people have a picnic on the middle of the golf course. Every recreational facility is geared towards a specific use. To try to use some argument that it's not inclusive enough means we have to get rid of our tennis courts, our swimming pool, how about our playing fields? Not everyone has kids that play on the playing fields. None of these arguments are legitimate arguments against the golf course or repurposing the golf course. So once again, why is this conversation even here? The initial was, we can't afford it. We see that's not true. Particularly at the current numbers. Of course we can afford it. And it's doing better. And once again, every single option, none of those talk about getting rid of the half cent sales tax. Everyone depends upon a half cent sales tax. So once again, we can chase numbers all we want. All the other factors all point to it makes, there is no reason whatsoever for us to look at changing the use of the golf courses. Particularly if we can work with the homeowners and HSL on leasing back the Push Ridge Course. Right there is, what, about $225,000 a year? Now we're down to less, or about what the pool costs us each year. 350 acres in a community center, it's not worth what the pool costs us. I guess, you know, I just think it's disingenuous for us to sit up here and say, oh, it's because we don't have the exact financial number, it may change by 1% or 2%. That's not it. This is a bigger issue. And like I said, I just see this, we, going down rabbit hole after rabbit hole, we'll never make a decision. Hire a landscape architect, let's go through out another $100,000 to have someone come back and tell us, you know, something that we have a fair idea for. It's going to cost a heck of a lot of money, take a golf course and convert it to open space. And it's a lot lower use than a golf course. So I think it's a decision that has lots of facets, and every one of those facets points to keeping the 36 holes. There's absolutely no compelling reason whatsoever why we are dragging this process on and on and on. And that's, that's how I feel about it.
Vice Mayor Barrett.
Thanks. I won't respond to every single thing that's been said, because I've already kind of stated, you know, where my mind is at in thinking about this. However, I do want to respond to what Councilmember Rodman said about the zoning. I asked that the rezoning be placed on the, on the agenda for tonight, and Councilmember Rodman, you know, didn't want that on the agenda, and that's fine. So it's going to be on the agenda in September. And the reason for that is because there's been a lot of confusion, the golf courses are all zoned, all kinds of different things. There's residential, there's commercial, there's all kinds of different things in the golf course zoning. And there's been a lot of confusion that I've seen in the public about what the zoning is. And people say, you know, you can't, you can't, you'd have to change the zoning if you were going to do this, or if you were going to do that. And so while there are deed restrictions that exist on the golf course, those deed restrictions do not belong to the town. They belong to the resort owner, and the resort owner can choose to waive those deed restrictions. And so my thought was, that if, if we made it, if we rezoned the property, you know, for, for, to be golf course, open space, and recreation, that that would put to rest some of those concerns that I see, and some of that confusion that I see in the public. And, you know, it won't really affect the town one way or the other, in terms of, because we can't do anything else on the property, because we have deed restrictions that apply to it. So, and then, you know, Councilmember Rodman said, why would we, why would we think about doing that if we're not thinking about closing holes? Well, you know, I think it's pretty obvious that one of the options that is on the table for me is to repurpose or close some holes. However, that doesn't mean that I've made the decision and that it's moving forward. There's more questions to be answered. Part of that is, what are the costs of repurposing look like? And, you know, doing a rezoning is, is part of that. But it's not, it's not to say that that's, the decision has been made, which is what he was trying to suggest. And so I think it's just in terms of looking at the entire thing, and trying to address what I see as confusion and questions in the public and in the community. So I just wanted to respond to that specifically, since that was, was directed at me. And so, so anyway, so that will be on the agenda for September 4th, for us to be able to have a discussion about if that's something that, you know, we would like to direct the town staff to do, is to proceed with a rezoning or not, to help eliminate that confusion.
Councilmember Rodman.
Just as I was mentioning there, there is no reason to rezone anything if we're not changing anything. And the second part of it is, that the town does not, on town-owned property, it does not need to follow any kind of zoning. Whatever it's owned, it's, I think there's four PADs, as I remember it, that allow different things within each of the four PAD, planned area developments. But the fact is, we can do, as a council, we can decide whatever we want to do with those golf course places. We don't have to listen to what the zoning is, because we own it. And that's what state law says. So again, I understand, and I'm glad you said that, that you haven't made up your mind. I just find that, never mind.
Councilmember Nicholson.
Just want to say one thing about the zoning. Like, let's say we do keep the 36 holes, and we keep the zoning as is. Let's say 20 years or 30 years from now, golf doesn't work for whatever reason, different council, whatever happens, that zoning's still there. And with the contingencies with the contract and stuff, a certain entity owns those conditions, they can remove them. If we're not operating golf, it goes back to them, they're able to lease it, they can lease it for 50 years. There's places with ground leases with 50 years, apartment complexes, whatever have you. So with us rezoning, even if we go 18, 36, whatever it is, it protects the homeowners. Right? So if it's zoned for residential in certain areas, when they did the NGF study, there's a part of it that is, and it was produced by WLB in conjunction, to figure out what they could and can do. So there's possibility that, yes, there's some areas that are zoned, zoned, commercial, residential. Don't worry about the zoning and the fact like, oh, we want to present zoning. The zoning's there to protect the homeowners in the future. If we get recalled, we're out, and it's different council down the road, years and years, at least we're protecting it for the homeowners for future, whether it's five, 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 years, whatever it is.
Okay. Thank you.
No, no. Wait a minute. Thanks.
Councilmember Solomon.
Okay. Zoning is, it is kind of a silly issue. Set first off, and I'll ask Biavella to correct me if I'm wrong, is it not correct that if the town owns the property, the town does not have to follow the town's zoning, or the council could change that anytime? This council could vote today to make it open space, and this council could vote at the next meeting to change it to high-density residential? Is that, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Solomon, the municipalities are exempt from zoning for municipal uses. And, and of course, zoning is a, an action that any elected body can take in the future.
Right. So it's meaningless for this council to declare it open space, or park space, or recreation space, because the law trumps it. And as, I mean, you have to assume, the only reason you want it, you need to change the zoning is if you want to change the use. But let's be clear that it's meaningless what the council does as far as zoning, unless the council wants to put zoning on it, because they want to sell it to somebody. Now, if we decide we wanted to sell it for development, we could then put residential...
Now, if we decide we wanted to sell it for development, we could then put residential or commercial zoning on it. In fact, the PAD allows all those uses on that property, if it was owned by a private individual. Because the Cuyahoga Hills PAD was very interesting, they didn't even call out specifically golf courses. They just said, if you're in this neighborhood, you can do A, B, C, D, E, F, or G on that land. So, if that land were to be sold to somebody else, a private individual like HSL was going to sell it, they'd have the option of doing whatever they wanted to. And the typical uses are, single-family residences, townhomes, higher-density residential, I see, by a second, commercial apartments. So, this is regressive. People complain, oh, we don't like the fact the town bought that land. If the town didn't buy that land, HSL was going to sell that land to a private owner who would be free to develop every square inch of it, except for the limits by our code. So, frankly, it may not have been such a bad decision that the prior council did by buying and protecting that 325 acres of land. Because the way the zoning was, they had carte blanche to do whatever they wanted on it. And as it is now, it's a golf course, and as long as the town operates it as a golf course, that's what it will remain.
Ms. Jacobs, I just, I want to check in with you, because this conversation began about having one set of numbers. There was agreement, or I understood there was agreement, that staff was going to work with the Budget and Finance Commission. And I'm just checking in with you, that that still holds?
Yes, sir, it does.
And one of those elements was, you know, clarifying the acreage, you know, just as an example, tonight, I've heard 340 acres, 325 acres, 175 acres. So, just be helpful to have that specifically for the Push Ridge, for the Cuyahoga, for the Conquistador, so that we know exactly. Because obviously, that factors in, or could factor in, to the repurposing component of these different scenarios.
We are very solid on the irrigated acres, that we are solid on. So, 63 and a half irrigated acres. But, yes, okay, we'll make sure, but we're solid on the irrigated acres.
In writing, and just spelled out, that would be greatly appreciated. I'll just say that one of the criticisms that I've received personally by different, and I've received a variety of criticisms, so I know, but the one that has come up repeatedly is in reference to the repurposing conversation, and the fact that we have not had a professional evaluation. And I'm in agreement with them. And you and I, Ms. Jacobs, have had conversations about that. I believe that that would be a valuable exercise, especially given the various, you know, the Councilmember Solomon spoke about the uncertainty, he mentioned grading. I think there's, that's a possibility that grading could be a component, it doesn't necessarily have to be a component. But I think with some evaluation by a professional individual, that that could be clarified. I think similar to, as we look at each of these options, as we look at each of these options, the 36, the 27, and the 18 hole, and the open space access or no golf, I think that having some consistency, so for example, the 36 option, it, what I, it has no reconfiguration in that. The 27-hole option has reconfiguration, it's basically modeled after the National Golf Foundation. I think it would be helpful to the council in terms of making a comparison between the 36, the 27, the 18, that, in terms of comparing apples to apples, that we can have a 27-hole course without repurposing, or without reconfiguring. Now, admittedly, admittedly, a 27-hole with reconfiguring, with nine holes coming back to a central point, would be ideal. But we're looking at a 36-hole where some reconfiguring would make it a better course, but we're not talking about doing that, we're talking about doing the minimal improvements to the 36. I think that that ought to translate into the 27 and the 18. I think in terms of the repurposing, to really understand what those costs are, so example for the Big Wash, I mean, that was heavily vegetated, and it's entirely, you know, different, I believe, than repurposing, or what the repurposing might look like in these open spaces. And so, to me, it's not a fair comparison. And I think without a professional, whether that's a landscape architect, or some other profession that has experience with landscape restoration, ecological restoration, I don't think we have a good idea of what those costs are. So, to help me make a final decision about the town's golf operations, and again, I haven't made any, I don't have any, haven't made any decisions, or preconceived ideas, open to all options, but to help me make a final decision about the town's golf operations, I'd move that staff issue a request for proposals from a qualified landscape architect to perform the following scope of work, a proposed design to repurpose. And they don't need to look, in fact, they don't need to look at 45 holes, they simply need to look at some selected holes, I would recommend of the, you know, either the Cuyahoga or Conquistador, but some representative holes, fairways of either of those courses as natural desert open space with minimal maintenance, consistent with the current deed restrictions. That proposal should include estimates about the cost to complete the proposed design, the time to implement the proposed design, and the yearly maintenance costs associated with the proposed design. And that would be my move, and I believe that that would be money well-spent, in terms of clarifying what actual cost would be incurred as part of the repurposing, if that were to happen. I'm not suggesting that that would necessarily happen, but I think without that information, it handicaps the council in terms of making a decision. Or I'll speak for myself, it handicaps me.
Second.
So, there's a second discussion?
Discussion.
Councilmember Penya, then, Councilmember Sol, okay, Rodman?
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, Councilmember Penya, you were first.
Oh, okay. So, given this new directive, first it was going to be, we were going to wait for the financials to reconcile those with the Finance and Budget Commission. We don't know what that timeline looked like for getting a decision. Now, we have this new element factored in. So, my question is, what is the timeline on that? And the reason I'm asking is because September is the time for membership renewal, for the golf, that factors in. We also have a truant contract that we need to be figuring out, that's another time issue. So, what is this particular motion presented by the mayor, what's the timeline on that? Because I think, given that we've heard appraisal value changes, the sense of urgency that these individuals would like, that have put on this subject, what is that timeline now added to a decision-making process? Because, I just want one more thing. We're asking to do a rezoning, I think that's on the September 4th, is that what, was that the date? So, we're going to be getting a request to rezone while we're in the middle of waiting for a report from a landscape architect? I mean, this is just so convoluted, so how long is that timeline, or estimated?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Penya, I would estimate, just on my knowledge of how RFPs go, putting a scope together, getting it out on the street, I would recommend at least three weeks that we'd have it advertised, get proposals back, evaluate them, negotiate a contract, that we could probably have a firm on board by middle to end of September, and then however long it would take, depending on the firm, to complete the work, again, depending on the breadth of the scope. And so, assuming if it's a small project with no public input, just some concepts, that would be probably a little bit, you know, sooner, maybe, maybe 45 to 60 days, maybe, if the council wanted something a little bit more extensive, some other options, that sort of thing, it might be, it might be a little bit longer. But that would be my off-the-cuff, and I don't know if our CFO wants to weigh in on what you think the process would be.
So, to understand, would that be 45 days from the end of September, once a contracted landscape architect is chosen?
That would be my estimate, yes.
So, now we're looking at a potential decision date of when?
Thanksgiving.
Okay. Okay. I just think if we're going to put something out there and add another element to this process, we need to be, as we talk about, being transparent, and being honest about what that timeline now is going to add to getting a decision made, which is more uncertainty to this process. So, now we're looking at a decision timeline of November? So, we're still going to rezone, we're going to have all this out there as an unknown? Doesn't make sense.
Councilmember Rodman?
Yeah, it, well, I understand, Mayor, I do respect, that you, we don't have what you asked for, I get that. But what I said before, I still believe. We can afford whatever we need to do, there will be moving numbers on the repurposing, there'll be moving numbers on the golf courses, and what it costs to do turf reduction on the courses, and fixed bunkers, and, you know, level tees, and all this other stuff, and really what it'll actually cost for the irrigation. I get it, all those numbers are going to move. But we've started talking about this in January, after already four years. And now we come at this point, at the end, at the beginning of August, to add another three months to the process, to get more numbers? It isn't a numbers issue. These numbers are in the same ballpark that we can afford. Is it a little more, is it a little, yes. But it is unconscionable to put another three months on to the people that have been in this limbo for all this time, when we don't need it. We simply don't need it. And I don't understand, other than to delay. I think that Councilmember Penya indicated that the renewals is September. Well, how many people of the members you think are going to renew if we're still waiting for a golf course landscape architect to come in? And we still, everything is still in the open, we won't even begin to see it until the middle of November. So, that's almost a forecast of doom, it's almost self-imposed. I mean, if we don't have that money, which is, what, about $800,000 or $900,000 from the members, beginning in October, you'll be right, the golf course won't be able to work. So, I'm sorry, I'm calming myself back down. But I've gone through this and gone through this. Please, 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 I agree with the mayor, let's not applaud, let's not do that. Everybody's trying to do the right thing, and I really mean that. I just don't see this as anywhere near the right thing. Thank you.
Councilmember Solomon?
Okay. So, I'm sorry, ma'am, but this is a council discussion, and members of the audience had the public input, and no matter whether we agree with your opinion or not, this is how we need to conduct business. So, no. I'm sorry. Okay. So, now we're talking about spending money to hire a landscape architect. By the way, no one said a dollar amount. So, as far as I know, this could be $10,000 or $350,000. We won't have the information until Thanksgiving. And of course, you know how things are around Thanksgiving, then we'll be into December. You know how things are in December. So, that's one more number. I'm sorry, I can't help, it's hard for me to believe that this is a genuine concern and nothing more than a delay tactic. This is pushing this process out, and I have to be honest, you know, it's talked about, the council spent time looking at issues in executive session. And it's been discussed now, so I can say, basically, all council looked at was contractual...
Stop, stop. We cannot discuss what went on, or what was looked at in executive session, we just can't. I'm sorry, we can't.
It was stated, we looked at our contractual requirements.
We cannot talk about, it is against the law.
Okay, so we didn't. Okay. This council's not spent one moment, one minute, since November, discussing how to improve the golf course, how to make it work. That's an honest statement, no one can deny it, if someone does, I'm sorry, it's not the truth. We have not spent one moment discussing that in any avenue. And you're not seeing it now either. There's nothing about, we can make this work. That's not the whole issue. This whole issue, I'm sorry, is about shutting down the golf course, that's all it is, plain and simple. I'd love to call for a vote right now, I'm just told that's not a wise thing to do. You know, I'm not a wise person. There's a motion on the floor, so I can't do anything. It's absurd. And are we doing this, even though it's going to delay things? Boy, you guys, you're going to be out of office before this is finished in four years. It's amazing. I at least want an amendment to put a dollar amount of not to, no, I'm going to vote against it, so it doesn't matter. You guys go spend the money you want to spend chasing.
For our money.
I know, well, you guys have to do something about it. I can't. I'm finished.
Any more discussion?
Let's vote.
I'd like to then take a vote on the motion. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Roll call vote, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, roll call vote. Mayor Winfield?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Barrett?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones-Ivy?
Aye.
Councilmember Nicholson?
Aye.
Councilmember Penya?
Nay.
Councilmember Rodman?
No.
Councilmember Solomon?
No. And, Mr. Mayor? No, I'd like to...
Councilmember Solomon?
Yes. I'd like to say something. I'd like to state the following. Whereas there are already over 50 miles of linear parks known as public trails in our community, and there has been no community desire to replace our golf course with another linear park. Whereas, a large part of Ora Valley was built around the 36 holes, El Conquistador and Lock and Yata golf courses, and they are both a historic and aesthetic component of our community. Whereas, the 36 holes of golf is a major visitor attraction, with thousands of visitors using the course each year, generating sales taxes and economic benefits for the entire town. Whereas, continuing to operate the 36 holes of golf is the lowest-cost option of those being considered. Whereas, retaining the 36 holes of golf is favored by residents by a margin of over 50 to 1. Whereas, closure or repurposing of the 36 holes of golf course will result in decreased property values, and higher taxes and fees for all residents. Now, therefore, to minimize costs, maintain property values, prevent increased taxes and fees for all of our residents, and to continue Ora Valley as a community of excellence, I move that the town continues to operate the 36 holes of golf of both the El Conquistador and Lock and Yata courses, along with the community center, and re-initiate discussions between the town, homeowners, and HSL for an acceptable solution for the Push Ridge course.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that for a loss of discussion.
Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. One of the, actually, a few of the things that we talked about, or I talked about at last week's meeting, the reasons for choosing the 36-hole, there's quantitative and qualitative reasons for choosing that. First and foremost, we have, we have a constituency that is going to be extremely affected. Net worth means something to a lot of people. And I firmly believe that if we look at the revenue side, and not just all the expense side, and we can somehow, as a community, get back together and try to make this work, we will have a brand that Ora Valley is known for, rather than recalls and all the negative things that come along with that. What we have is a community where we're known as the number-one safest city, we're known for our arts and culture, we're talked about for all the reasons people want to be here. We're talked about for all the reasons people want to be here. That means something. And I've listened to all of you tonight, I've listened to all of you, or at least the people that were there last week, and I, you have a very valid reason for wanting to keep it open. The other thing is Ms. Jacob's projections and assumptions. While we can sit here and say, we can disagree all day long, the reality is, this council voted on a budget recently for the town, one hundred and forty-three million. The town staff put that together. We voted consecutively unanimously on a budget by numbers put together by staff. And if I'm not mistaken, our finance and budget group, while they were very new, they still saw those numbers. So I'm inclined to say that, while there is doubt, I really believe that they have put their best foot forward to give us projections and assumptions, that I think if we get together and work on moving forward, looking at revenue generation and looking at why we all want to be in this community. Somebody made a comment. It was a word, I want to say grudge match. That was the word that was used tonight, a grudge match. That's what it feels like from previous council members and going forward with community members, getting sideways with one another. When is it going to stop? We are better than this. And I will say that the individuals who are not for this Thirty-Six Holes, we all have to understand, they have an opinion too. They have a right to their opinion. But at the same time, you have your opinion too, and you're most affected. And that's really what I see and where you're coming from. So my feeling on it is, the capital outlay for a Thirty-Six Hole versus an Eighteen Hole is less expensive. Still going to require irrigation to do the Eighteen Hole, Twenty-Seven Hole, however you want to call it, we're still going to have to do capital outlay. So for Thirty-Six Holes, it's less. The other thing that comes into play here is our chief, from our fire department, Chief Carr, says, "We have major issues to be concerned about." This is an industry expert that's airing in on this as an issue. We need to take heed, because I am not a fire chief, and I don't want it resting on me if something goes wrong because we did not listen. The other thing is property values. It has an exponential effect. And we may not see it right now, but we may see it in the future. And I don't think it's fair to do that to Oro Valley. We've got a lot of good things coming on. We've got a vet school, we've got Oro Valley Innovation Lab. There are so many good things happening with our economic development. We should not impede on going through this golf issue anymore. We are better than that as a community. So for all the qualitative and quantitative factors, I didn't even speak about the water with our water utility, that's, that has to be made up. What is that going to look like? So you know what? With all the factors considered, I support the Thirty-Six Holes.
Vice Mayor Barrett?
I move to table the motion.
Second. That's a motion that takes precedence. It has to be voted on.
All those in favor? Do we want to do a roll call?
Yes, please.
Roll call.
Do we discuss that?
You can.
The motion to table?
We can.
Isn't it open to discussion?
Only if it's for a particular time, and there could be a debate about the time. If it's just a motion to table, unless the mayor wants to entertain comments.
Just a motion to table.
It's been another delay tactic.
Roll call vote, please.
It's a motion that takes precedence. It's a majority, if it's a pass by a majority, it's tabled.
Okay.
It's Robert's rules. Mayor Winfield?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Barrett?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones-Ivy?
I want to be clear, is this a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Yes.
Councilmember Nicholson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pena?
Nay.
Councilmember Rodman?
No.
Councilmember Solomon?
No.
Okay, so this closes...
Mr. Mayor?
This closes Agenda Item Six. We'll take a fifteen-minute break and then resume. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Item One.
Resolution Number R-19-39, declaring the proposed zoning code amendments to Chapter Twenty-Eight related to signs in the right-of-way provided in Exhibit A within Attachment One and filed with the town clerk a public record.
So I need a motion, Mike?
Yes, that's correct.
Presentation?
We've got to have a presentation, yeah.
Sorry.
This item is specifically for declaring a public record.
Okay.
And then the presentation would come on Item One-B.
Okay, thank you. So I do need a motion?
Yes, that's correct.
Rest the motion, let's do it.
Okay, Vice...
I move to approve Resolution Number R-19-39, declaring the proposed amendments to Chapter Twenty-Eight of the Oro Valley Zoning Code regarding signs in the right-of-way as shown in Attachment One, Exhibit A, and filed with the town clerk a public record.
I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One-B, public hearing, ordinance number O-19-06, discussion of possible action amending Chapter Twenty-Eight of the zoning code related to signs in the right-of-way provided in Exhibit A within Attachment Two.
Okay, I move to approve ordinance number...
We have a staff.
Oh, we got them, sorry.
Good evening. My name is Patty Hayes. I'm with the town's planning and permitting divisions. And the purpose for this item is to review proposed changes to the zoning code related to signs in the right-of-way. There we go, how's that? Can you hear me now?
You can lift it up.
Can you hear me now?
No, I can't hear you.
There we go.
Ms. Hayes, would it help to raise the podium a bit, so the microphone is a little... There you go.
Yeah, there we go, maybe. Does that work? All right, let's try that again. How's that? All right, the purpose of this item is to review proposed changes to the zoning code related to signs in the right-of-way. We will look at the types of signs that our zoning code currently allows in the right-of-way and the proposed changes that bring those signs into legal compliance with state and federal regulations. We will also look at a proposal to allow monument and entryway signs in the right-of-way and those related standards. While bringing the code into legal compliance is important, council does have wide latitude in determining which signs to allow in the right-of-way. First, let's get familiar with the area of land related to the signs that we are talking about tonight. That area of land is the right-of-way. All sign standards that we are going to talk about tonight are related to signs in the right-of-way only. A right-of-way is a section of land dedicated to the public to allow for roads, sidewalks, and other public improvements. The right-of-way is not just an area of land where the pavement of the road exists, but also can include an area of landscaping or natural desert, as we see on this slide. The widths of right-of-ways can vary throughout the town. Again, the signs that we are going to talk about tonight are only related to the right-of-way. The signs shown on this slide are all of the signs currently allowed in the right-of-way, which were originally created for specific users to display specific messages, such as an open house, election, special event, or Kia signs for a new subdivision. Why are we looking at these signs in the right-of-way today? What has changed? Well, in 2015, the United States Supreme Court made a ruling about signs in the right-of-way through a case named Reed versus Gilbert. This was a lawsuit brought to the courts by a church who is located in Gilbert, Arizona. That lawsuit asked why some signs, such as open house signs, were allowed to be placed in the right-of-way, while other signs, such as a sign directing folks to church services, were not allowed in the right-of-way. The Supreme Court ruled that it is unconstitutional to allow some messages on a sign and not others in the right-of-way. The court told us that we must handle these signs in a content-neutral method. Content-neutral is a term you're going to hear a lot tonight. It simply means we must act as though we cannot read the sign or read what is written on the sign if it is in the right-of-way. It cannot matter if the sign reads "open house," advertises a sale, or directs us to a religious event. Jurisdictions can only regulate the size, quantity, and locations of signs placed in the right-of-way, but not the message on the sign. This was a nationwide shift in how signs in the right-of-way were going to be handled from that point on. Then, for those of us here in Arizona, we also had to learn about a couple of changes to state laws in addition to the federal ruling that I just talked about. First, the state of Arizona ruled that local jurisdictions could no longer distinguish between a person holding a sign stating their political opinion over a person holding a sign advertising a sale or event for a business. The state law basically fell in line with content neutrality standards required by the United States Supreme Court. We must act as if we cannot read the sign. Then the state determined that political signs were going to be treated differently. The state tells us that candidates running for office can place fairly large signs in the right-of-way several weeks before an election and can leave them up several days after an election. The irony is that the state law seems to be content-based for politicians, while the federal ruling tells us that we cannot regulate the content on a sign in the right-of-way. This conflict between federal and state laws has been challenging to planners and attorneys of all jurisdictions in Arizona. Well, what do we do with all of these new rules? Well, first, we had to do something immediately. Our zoning code was instantly out of compliance with new federal standards. So as an interim solution in 2015, town council adopted an ordinance that allowed us to direct, allowed us to use our code directly in a content-neutral method. This meant that although our code currently reads that a realtor can place an open house sign in the right-of-way, we just act as if the code reads that anyone can place a sign in the right-of-way for any reason, as long as the size, quantity, and location of the code is adhered to. This stopgap measure from 2015 gave us some time to figure out how to change our codes. It also gave us a testing period to see how our current code operates with content-neutral We had to determine what to do with the currently-used sign types. Basically, at this point, we are proposing to keep the same signs that we've always allowed, but rename them, modify the descriptions, and remove some duplications that we found. The proposed sign standards reflect what we have been doing for the past four years while taking the content-neutral standards very seriously. We also know that keeping these same sign types has actually not resulted in an overproliferation of signs in the right-of-way, except for perhaps during election season because of the state regulations that I talked about earlier, which are out of our control. Although we must bring our sign code into legal conformance, council has latitude to determine which, if any, sign types for the right-of-way will remain in the code. This summarizes the standards related to changes for the existing signs in the right-of-way. Next, we will look at monument and entryway signs, much like the ones shown on this slide. While the town was in the process of revising the standards for signs in the right-of-way, we received a letter from one of our local churches. In that letter, the church asked if the town would consider allowing monument and entryway signs in the right-of-way. Currently, monument and entryway signs are only allowed on private property and not in the right-of-way. When staff reviewed the request, it became evident that the town could develop specific standards to accommodate this request. But keep in mind, when a sign is placed in the right-of-way, we can no longer regulate the message on the sign. So let's look at another photo of the right-of-way with monument and entryway signs in mind. This is actually an example of the property belonging to the church who requested the code change. Currently, the code would only allow a monument sign on their private property, far away from the travel lanes. The yellow star indicates a potential location for a sign on their private property. They have stated that allowing a sign to be placed in the right-of-way would improve visibility for the church. So allowing monument or entryway signs in the right-of-way is a significant change to the zoning code, which is why staff develop standards that would not create an overproliferation of the signs. For example, limit the location to the right-of-way to major or minor arterial roads, limit the quantity to one per street frontage per property, and only when there are significant distances between the property and the street, or when special circumstances cause visibility issues. And of course, traffic, visibility, and safety would be at the topmost concern. Since the request to place monument signs in the right-of-way involves a permanent location on public property, the review and approval would not simply happen at staff level like an average sign permit, but would be a process that included both the Planning and Zoning Commission and town council, along with requiring a license agreement. And as always, we look to the general plans, goals, and policies when updating signers' regulations to emphasize identification and direction without intrusive signs. Bringing the code into compliance with the legal standards set by the state and federal governments is a necessary update. The subjective topic for the council tonight is which types of signs to allow in the right-of-way. And that concludes my presentation.
This is a public hearing for this particular agenda item. I have no blue cards unless I've somehow overlooked or misplaced. Is there anybody wishing to speak to this topic? Hearing none and seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion?
I have a quick question.
Vice Mayor Barrett?
Okay, so if we move forward with the monument signs that are permanent and allowing them in the right-of-way?
Yes.
Are there possibilities that we'll have permanent signs in between the road and the sidewalk, kind of like those political signs? Or will still the monument signs be further back?
The monument signs in the proposal that we have tonight, the monument signs could only be as close as twenty feet to the road under certain circumstances.
Okay, so they'll always be at least twenty feet back from the road?
Yes, at least.
Okay.
And if I may, Member Barrett, because this, any sign in the right-of-way will require a lease agreement, town has complete authority on positioning that sign very specifically on a case-by-case basis because of that lease agreement part. So we will be looking at safety and visibility and making sure there aren't conflicts with sidewalks, et cetera.
Okay, and you'll be looking at the height and things as well as part of that?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Nicholson?
Fire Department, right, YouTube. So you said like lease agreement, so if we have to advertise and roads, are we responsible in adding Austin?
If I may, it'll be a license agreement. That's our standard, that's, yeah, that's our standard that we do for any private development in the right-of-way. And essentially, it will establish the rights of the town that if it needs to be moved in the future, they'll have to move it at their own expense.
Any more discussion?
No more questions.
Entertain a motion?
Yes, I move to approve ordinance number nineteen-06, amending the zoning code, Chapter Twenty-Eight, related to signs in the right-of-way as shown in Attachment Two, Exhibit Eight.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item Two, Mr. Standish?
Discussion of possible action regarding the police chief recruitment process.
Do we... Okay. Mr. Brady?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, thank you for all of your time this evening. I'm excited that my agenda item is now up. I'd like to discuss the police chief recruitment process. As you know, council just accepted the retirement notification from Chief Daniel Sharp, who will be retiring in February 2020, after a forty-year career in professional law enforcement, with the last twenty being here with us at the town of Oro Valley. In your packet of materials, you will see a memo dated July nineteenth that was prepared for you that outlines options for your consideration and how you would like to conduct the recruitment process for the next police chief. This memo outlines a couple of high-level options with associated costs and timeframes for your consideration and moving forward with the police chief recruitment process. Options presented in the memo include a process that considers internal-only candidates. Depending on the complexity of this process, potential supplemental services from an executive search firm may be necessary, depending on the level of services that you would require. The timeframe for this process would be about two to three months, with a preliminary cost estimate of thirty-five hundred to forty-five hundred dollars. The other option outlined in the memo is a process that considers internal and external candidates. For this process, staff recommends utilizing the services of a professional executive search firm with experience in hiring local government executives. The timeframe for this process is three to six months, with a preliminary cost... Items to consider include costs, timeframes, and consideration of service levels needed to make this critical hiring decision. As this position is one of two direct reports to town council, it is important that council have a professional recruitment partner that will also directly report to you, the council, for this process. This position will have a major impact on the well-being and vitality of our residents, businesses, police department, and the town as a whole. Thank you for your time this evening, and I'm prepared to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. I do have two blue cards for this particular item. Kevin Peterson?
Okay, we haven't been here too long, so I'll, I'll make this as quick as possible. Mr. Mayor, members of council, appreciate the opportunity to talk to you tonight. My name is Kevin Peterson, Police Officer Association President, and because of blue-card rules, I'll introduce this. Gentlemen, this is Rick Rendon. He's the vice president of the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge here in Oro Valley. The president couldn't be here tonight. So with that being said, obviously, we're talking about an important topic. Earlier tonight, I provided a letter to the town clerk, so you can refer to that later or you can get with any of us if you have any questions. I'm going to read that letter to you in, in, in my time.
Kevin, if you could just maybe speak a little bit closer into that mic.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this letter is regarding the police chief recruitment process and is intended to notify you that the Oro Valley Police Officers Association, as well as the Fraternal Order of Police Number 53, support an internal process for police chief. We believe that a succession plan has been successfully completed by Police Chief Sharp and strongly support hiring from within. It is our belief that hiring from within will help maintain the outstanding culture and services that have been created over the last 19 years. We thank you for your consideration in this matter and please do not hesitate to contact us with any questions. Respectfully, Kevin Peterson, President Oro Valley Police Officers Association, and Sarah Leiner, the President for, of the Fraternal Order of Police Number 53.
Thank you. I also have a blue card from a Mr. Larry Stevens.
Mayor and council, I'm Larry Stevens. I served as a certified officer for the town of Oro Valley from December 1984 through February 2017, when I retired from the position of deputy chief of police that I had held for nearly 10 years. Tonight, I return to support the recruitment of a police chief from within the Oro Valley Police Department. I've read the memorandum that addresses the police chief recruitment process recommendations going forward. I think the most important thing that is missed in this memorandum is that the process had really already been going on for nearly 20 years to develop internal candidates that would be prepared for this position. Not long after Chief Sharp was appointed chief of police, he committed to provide training, experience, and education opportunities to members of the Oro Valley Police Department to prepare those interested with a combination of those assets to seek and serve in the position of police chief. For my nearly 35 years of full-time law enforcement service, over 32 of those years of the Oro Valley Police Department, I am completely confident that you have members in the Oro Valley Police Department right now who would be outstanding in the position of police chief. In reviewing the advantages and disadvantages you've been provided related to internal and external candidates, I think the weighting of the internal candidate's institutional knowledge of the town and police department far outweighs any advantage of an external candidate. I say this because the Oro Valley Police Department has provided service and safety in this community that is recognized throughout as one of the best there is. The internal candidates not only understand this, but they have been integral in maintaining the standard. The understanding of the philosophy and approach by an internal candidate will provide a seamless continuation of this service this community expects. When it comes to an executive recruitment partner, I have no idea why you wouldn't rely on Chief Sharp and Human Resources to work directly with the elected body in this process. When you look at Chief Sharp's resume and accomplishments, who are you really going to find that would be better suited to evaluate a process, to select a police chief, to serve the community he serves so well for so many years? I am personally aware of Chief Sharp's extensive involvement in the recruitment and selection of executive-level professionals for a wide variety of positions over the years. The one thing I knew when I retired was that Oro Valley Police Department would continue to excel because of the members that are still here and are now eager to take on even larger leadership roles. I would strongly encourage you to rely on Chief Sharp's extensive expertise to work with Human Resources to establish an internal candidate recruitment and selection process. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Brady? Discussion from council? Councilmember Jones-Ivy and then councilmember Penya?
Mr. Brady, I'm looking at the, some of the disadvantages on an internal candidate-only recruitment, and I'd like to have you address, costs could increase depending on a level of outside services required. If you could explain to me what that means.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, councilmember Jones-Ivy, the cost could increase for outside services based on what we would need if we wanted to do external background checks, depending on the level of community engagement, if there were events to be had, there would be a small cost associated with that, and anything extra that you might want a firm to do to, to handle externally.
Thank you.
Is that, councilmember, is that all, councilmember Jones-Ivy?
Yeah, that's it.
Councilmember Penya?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd actually like to ask Chief Sharp a couple of questions, if I may. Chief Sharp, under your succession plan, do you feel there are qualified internal candidates?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, councilmember Penya, absolutely.
And can you tell me why you think these candidates are qualified?
Well, actually, Chief Stevens did a great job explaining, you know, over the, the time that I have been here, I made the commitment when I was appointed chief. Mayor Lewis is in the audience, he was there when I made the commitment when I was appointed, and I said that although I was an external candidate, because there was no one, no internal candidates at the time, my commitment to the community and to the mayor and council at the time was that I would make sure that there was a succession plan, that we would get, we would have qualified individuals so that the next police chief could be an internal candidate, thus assuring that the culture continues and that the community continues to be served. I provided those opportunities to members of command staff so they could get to the FBI National Academy. I fulfilled that commitment, and actually, with the last, one of the lieutenants that I committed to will be attending this fall, gave them time and incentive opportunities for completing degrees if they needed to do that. And I think that people have risen to the challenge, and we have a fine candidate pool, as I mentioned in my retirement memorandum, that I feel not only do we have the, the talent in place to fill the chief's position, but we also have the talent to backfill whomever goes from that position internally as well.
Okay, thank you. And then, how many police chief selection processes have you been involved in, in your tenure in law enforcement? And what size, what size organizations?
I've, I've been on the selection process with, for every chief in Sarita with the exception of the first one, so I believe that's five. The Nogales Police Chief, the Miranda Police Chief, Sierra Vista Police Chief. So I would say somewhere seven to nine.
Seven to nine?
Between seven to nine chief processes.
Okay. I'd actually just like to make some comments, is, I gave a lot of thought to this subject because I think it's very important when we look at our community, and obviously, the accolades of being the number-one safest city, there's a lot that goes into that, and its leadership, its culture, and I was trying to think about why that was so important to us and what it's built, and the word that came to me was a brand. And I think that, I, I'm in support of looking at an internal candidate process because we have a brand that's been built in this town, and it comes from the leadership, and with that brand, within that brand, we have a culture, and I think it speaks volumes that we have the representatives from the union speaking on behalf of internal candidates tonight, because that tells me there is a culture of support among the OVPD, and we are a service organization. Governments provide service to our citizens. What that tells me is that that transcends into excellent service to our citizens through leadership, and the way that I see that is through an organizational impact. I think that it's important for rewarding loyalty and commitment to employees that give every day, they're committed to not only our town, but to each other. I think that speaks volumes. And the other thing that I wanted to mention, in addition to promoting from within, it builds morale. That morale transcends into the service that we give our citizens. Promoting from within, I think, also allows for a trickle-down effect. We continue to promote, we continue that morale, we continue those, that department wanting to continue to keep our community number one, safest city in Arizona, and I think that speaks volumes. And the other thing that I think is really important is through the leadership that I think our internal candidates in this succession plan that you've been doing, we are innovators, and we can look at going at a national search, but what I think has happened is the nationals come to Oro Valley. They look at us as innovators in law enforcement, they look at us as being an iconic department. Is that correct?
I don't know if they look at us as iconic or not, but...
I do. I think it's great. I like, I like being safe, I'll tell you that.
Oral Valley is on the national stage, not just me, members of the command staff, our detectives, we, we are, we are viewed in, in leadership role on the national level, yes.
Thoughts I had about this, because I do support looking at an internal candidate process, I think there's high morale that exists with an OVPD, and that quality leadership in the employees then commits to our, this high service levels that we have in our town, and I want to see that continue. And I think that I trust you with the succession plan that you've had, you have that respect with your leadership throughout law, the law enforcement community. I take that very seriously. I also think that our national presence, being what I would call somewhat iconic, we're not in a place where we need a change agent to come in with what we have. We don't need to fix our public safety, and I think maybe internal candidates could have new ideas, that's great, but we don't have, we don't have the need for a change agent to bring it in, to bring someone in and say, "We need to fix it." I, I don't want to risk what Oro Valley has as being the safest city. The other thing I want to, another perspective that I think is important to look at, what is the investment that we've already spent and put into these individuals that have been in this succession plan and the continuation of even those internal candidates that may be able to apply for this position, but even the other officers within the organization that are getting training? We are putting an investment into our OVPD that when we talk about, well, taxpayer money, and where are we getting our value, and we need to be watching our pennies, and you know what? We have already invested in these individuals. I want to see us capitalize on that investment. So for that reason, I'm ready to make a motion unless there's other...
What do you have other counsel that...
As I said...
You can make a motion.
I would like to make a motion, thank you. I move that the council direct staff to proceed with the process of interviewing candidates for police chiefs solely through the, an internal candidate process inclusive of Chief Daniel Sharp's recommendations and advisement.
Second. Okay, discussion? Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Solomon?
Well, I, I agree with everything that councilmember Penya has said. I have a few technical questions first for the chief. You're retiring in February, unless we can convince you not to, but, so ideally, looking back, when would you have liked to have had a candidate selected so that you can, I assume you'd want some overlap and training time with them whether they're internal or external? So you've done this for nine other or so cities. Ideally, when should we have the successful candidate in place?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Solomon, it, I, and as I indicated in my memo announcing my retirement, I, I would like to have a seamless transition. You know, if we had a, a few months to do that where, where, especially if it's an internal candidate, then, then they would be stuck with me, and we would be able to do that transition so they could learn and shadow me, and we could do the, the timing of, of how things were done. And I think that makes for a more seamless, when you have that internal ability to do that. I know when I went into the manager's offices, the interim, I spent a, a few months with, you know, about six weeks with, with the town manager then, and then I was able to transition out when we got, got our real town manager. And so spent time, so I think, I think all of that transition was, was very seamless. I would see the same type of thing going on. The more time we could spend together, the better it would be, just logistically, and if, if, if this motion passes, clearly, it would be Mr. Brady and I would work on that and, and hopefully be able to do that relatively quickly.
So it sounds like if we were to go, if we were to do the internal and go external, it sounds like we might be lucky to have some, not have someone in place till the end of the year, which would be a fairly short time. But my, my other question for you is, say we were to go external, which I, I don't think is a good idea, and I'll say why, is, are there additional considerations of bringing someone in from out of state? Do they have to go through additional certifications or training? Do they, can somebody just come in and become chief of police or in Arizona? What's, what's the process for that?
Well, I can, in Arizona and outside of Arizona, if, if we have an internal candidate, there's no need to do a background check. I've been back grounding them as long as they work for me. And so, but there's also no requirement, Arizona post requirement, because they're not coming to a new, new position. So we don't have to do a polygraph, we won't have to do a psychological, we won't have to do a medical. So we, we would be able to, just to forego those additional steps and the time-consuming and the expense of that. In the case of an out-of-state candidate, they would have to come to Arizona and become Arizona-certified through the Arizona Peace Officer Standard and Training Board, and depending on what their academy training was and what their training background would be, they would have to take what we could refer to as either the short exam or the long exam. So they'd have to pass a written exam, and they'd have to pass a physical, police officer physical agility test, as well as doing the polygraph, the psychological, the, the physical that, that's required of all when you come into it. So we would avoid all, if we said, said it with an internal candidate, we wouldn't have to do any of those.
Okay, well, thank you. You know, somebody had written a book years ago, and they examined long-term successful corporations like, one was Coca-Cola. And what they found was, all the longevity and successful corporations had an internal succession plan, and that's what differentiated them from other companies that were here and faded away or had major downturns. And that's something that's been going on within our police department. They have had an in-place succession plan to keep the police department successful. As mentioned, Oro Valley is very unique. Our police department is nationally known. We are the innovators. We have people from all over the country and sometimes from out of the country coming to us saying, "Please show us how to implement the SRO program that you have. Please show us how to implement the community policing that you have." We're the ones who are exporting the expertise. We certainly don't need to import expertise as a police chief. The other big item is, look at our community relations. After some of the unrest in several communities a few years ago, I know someone posed a question, or it may have been the former mayor or somebody, posed a question to our chief of police, says, "Look what's going on in Ferguson, could that happen here in Oro Valley?" And the response was, "No." And the obvious following question was, "Well, why?" Says, "Because we know our community. Our community knows us. They know our officers. We're involved." We certainly don't need to import expertise as a police chief. The other big item is, look at our community relations. After some of the unrest in several communities a few years ago, I know someone posed a question or it may have been the former mayor or somebody posed a question to our chief of police, says, "Look what's going on in Ferguson. Could that happen here in Oral Valley?" And the response was, "No." And the obvious following question was, "Well, why?" He says, "Because we know our community. Our community knows us. They know our officers. We're involved." That is an enormous, enormous component of why we have the policing that we have. There would absolutely, be absolutely no need to go outside of our community to look for a replacement for the chief of police. I feel if we did, it'd be extremely, first off, from a logical rational perspective, it's longer, more costly, and I don't see us getting a more qualified individual than from within. It's extremely disruptive because a big part, particularly in a police department, as you know, is unique. There's a culture. There's a leadership style. Their way, things are done and someone from the outside will be completely unfamiliar with the culture, with the leadership style and with the community. And that's a major negative. And as Rhonda pointed out, things aren't broken. We don't need to shake anything up. We're the ones who are shaking up the rest of the nation and it would be absolutely foolish and irresponsible for us to risk changing that by going outside of our own community and our own department. So I just would fully support an evaluation, particularly with the chief being on whatever type of evaluation committee we set up to look at the potential candidates to make a recommendation. Thank you.
Councilmember Rodman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, just to piggyback on some of the things that have been said, I was thinking we do have people come to us to train their people and how do we do this? How did you make, get this reputation? How did you earn the rewards and awards? And as I understand it from the chief and his succession plan, we've had intensive training for at least three of your internal candidates. Every single day, they're learning and know how and have contributed to how we do it in Oral Valley and how we, how we have the results that we have. So I think that's invaluable. We don't bring somebody else in who has to learn what it is we do that's successful. They may know, maybe they're doing the same thing somewhere else. That's possible. But I know that the people internally certainly have had intensive training. By going inside, we underline our support to continue what's worked. I mean, we have a police chief that I think we all trust, period. He has always been the best, what's best for Oral Valley to be his goal and his advice. And, you know, we now say to this department, "Yeah, you're losing your leader, but you're not losing what you do and how you do it." I think I did a little executive search for a little while after I retired in Chicago when I first came out here. And typically, when I would go into an organization, number one, you need to figure out the culture. That takes you quite a while. So we bring an external search person. They're going to have to figure out who we are and what's important to us and that takes time and sometimes they get it, sometimes they don't. But the answer about whether we do internal, external always was, are there problems in the organization? Do we have qualified folks? If there are no problems and we have qualified folks, we almost every time went internal because for all the reasons we've heard, the morale of the people, the fact that we hit the ground running, the fact that we underline and support morale. It also opens up people to be promoted from within, behind the chief. If we can't, it's not a be-all, end-all. If we choose to go internal and we do the interview, not we, but the interview committee does the interviews and we feel we don't have someone that we feel comfortable with, we can always then engage an external recruiter. So I don't think it's, that we're making a decision, we can't, you know, we're locked into one of the three people if that's how many actually applies. So I don't see anything that's a negative at all. We don't have problems. We've got internal candidates. We have an award-winning police department and we have the recommendation of a police chief that we all respect. So I would, I intend to vote yes on this motion.
The most important decision appointment will make is, of course, chief of police. And to, Mr. Brady, if you could, maybe to take on President, Councilmember Rodman. It's not, I don't, I know it's not the President of the United States.
I'm kidding. It's, it's...
It's a late and I wear, I wear a few different hats, but anyway, Mr. Brady, could you just speak to that? I guess two things. The interview process, so what that, I mean, I've talked with the chief. I've talked with Mayor Loomis, who was the last mayor that elected a chief and did a great job. But could you speak to those two things? Let's say we go through this process, an internal process, for whatever reason, you know, candidate doesn't emerge and we want to look externally. And then also, in that internal process, what does that interview process look like? And I have a sense of what was done in the past. I suspect you do too, so.
For the past year, I'm not exactly sure. I have a little bit of idea, but I can tell you from personal experience, I've been through between fire and police, probably about four recruitments on that, on that level at a local government. All but one was an internal, external search. The internal, when we did internal only, did not work out. I'm not saying that would be the case here. I absolutely believe we have good qualified candidates, but my job is to be objective and give you both sides of this for you to make the best decision. If we would go outside, let me back up a little bit and say, you know, I talked to my colleagues across the state. I asked them, "Who's had a police chief recruitment in the past five years? Help me out. What did you do?" There was nobody that was internal only. There are advantages to internal only. Why they didn't choose that, I don't know. Councilmember Pena, Councilmember Rodman spoke to the advantages and I agree with that. There are also advantages to looking external. If you go look at the literature, I could present you an equal stack of reports or journal articles that would support either one. I don't think you would go wrong either way. But in the past, executive level recruitments, specifically chief recruitments, it was the goal of my previous councils, managers, that they wanted to have a process that was transparent, that seemed open to the community, and that's why we did internal, external. Now, if you go with a recruitment firm, and I've had experience with this, it will take a little bit longer. The advantage you have there is that you'll be able to compare internal candidates to other people to make sure that we do have the best of the best and we very likely do. But it's more of an open process. They can provide us with services such as community event meetings, surveys, public input from staff as well as residents, but it would be a three to six month process. The advantage of that would be that you have someone that reports directly to you and can kind of be an objective resource for you. So we're looking three to six months on that. And generally, the practice is for this level of position because of how critical it is, I've seen internal, external recruitments typically.
So maybe just to clarify, Mr. Brady, so on the internal, you mentioned on the internal, external, that there is an executive search firm. And so there's that firm that works with the council. So in the internal, who is that?
In the internal, it would likely be myself, Chief Sharp and a selection committee, I imagine, that, you know, that you would appoint to help us with that. We could use smaller services from a search firm to do certain aspects, like if we wanted to have community events or surveys, they can help us out with that. And that's why it's like the 35 to 45, $100 range, just to get some extra services.
So I think the community, I mean, that is something that actually I think is important given the support and interest that the community has for our police department, public safety, to have some involvement or ownership in that process. Are you saying that that's, it would require a firm to do that?
They would help facilitate the discussion.
And so if we could just go to the interview process, so in the past, and maybe just to, there were some different, there was a community committee that was made up that interviewed the candidates. There was the council. I believe there was chief, a chief's...
A chief's panel, yes.
A chief's panel, was there?
And then there was a employee, a department panel.
A department panel. And I know you and I've had discussions with an internal, you wouldn't necessarily, could you just elaborate, chief, about why you believe those wouldn't necessarily be needed or...
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, the, you know, the intent and, you know, in having, and the process that was put together, it was done all completely in-house when I processed. And again, it was an external only because there were no internal candidates, but the HR director at the time put together that, the idea of having a, an employee panel, the department employees, is because although I was pretty well-known in the department, I ran the training academy that trained a lot of the officers in Oral Valley and, but they didn't, the, all the candidates were outside, so they didn't really know. So this was an opportunity for them to kind of understand the values and where, how the person's thought process. If we have an internal candidate, our, our folks know the internal candidates. They know how they think. They know, you know, they've interacted with them for the most part since most of them have been on the department. So, so we have that. I certainly feel a community panel would be an absolute must, especially with my philosophy related to community policing and all. I certainly think council would be an interview panel. And, you know, I think we could brainstorm and look at other ways of doing things. You know, one of the things, and just to the point, Mr. Brady's point about talking with other, with his peers around the state and all, we're in a unique position here. I have skewed the numbers. The average tenure of a police chief is three to five years in this country. You know, it's one thing if I, if I made the commitment that I'm going to work on a succession plan and then I was only here for three and a half years. I think this would be, okay, well, you know, you really didn't do much with that. You know, I've been doing it for, for pushing 20 years. So I feel like we've really, you know, this is one of those things where this has been a labor since the beginning to make sure that we had that and I've watched the development of the folks and, you know, and that's why I am, again, I'm not going to make a recommendation to you all that I don't think is in the very best interest of this community and that's why I'm absolutely confident that we have the talent in-house. So, you know, but whatever process that we would come out, definitely the community would have to be involved, definitely mayor and council would have to be involved. I believe maybe a chief's panel that we could put together or something like that. But again, I think, and I, I know Mr. Brady's relatively new, but I've, I've seen his performance and I know he has the capabilities of putting together this very successful process in-house.
A chief's panel would be made up of chiefs in the, in this area, in the Tucson, Sarita, Marana...
Well, we could have, actually, you know, with my connections, I could bring, I could bring chiefs in from all over the country, but I would just think, just from an expense standpoint, it'd be nice to keep them so we don't have to put them up at a hotel or pay their travel.
Okay. Vice Mayor Barrett and then Councilmember Jones-Ivy.
Thank you. We have an excellent police department and I'm sure that we have so many wonderful candidates internally that could fill the role of chief of police. I think that from the position of the town council, that we owe it to the town to make sure that every person in the town feels confident that we got the very best applicant possible. And so for that, and that would include whoever we pick as the chief of police. So for that reason, I would, I think I would favor an internal and external search. And another part of the reason for that is, is, you know, any elimination of any perception that, that this was never a competitive or an open process, because I feel like hiring should be a competitive and an open process and that that's just the, you know, the way that it should be done. And so that's, that's just generally what I would favor and I think that that would give us all, we still can definitely hire our internal candidates, but that just gives us all the, you know, the sense that, and the assurance that we got the very best candidate for the job that was possible. And so I think that's what I would feel comfortable with.
Councilmember Jones-Ivy.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Chief Sharp, I certainly respect your experience and everything that you've contributed to our community, but I also support an internal, external candidate recruitment effort because I'd like to feel like there's some transparency. And are you saying that under the advantages, the last bullet point, the capacity for a deeper dive into each candidate by utilizing services such as the community surveys, et cetera, et cetera, that that can occur with an internal candidate? Or it normally does not? It's only exclusively external candidates?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Jones-Ivy, that was actually Mr. Brady's memo, but no, we can do a deeper dive into our own candidates. In fact, I can do a much deeper dive into internal candidates than, than I can with an external candidate.
Okay.
That's the thing is, again, these, these folks have worked for me for most of their careers, if not all of their career with the department. And also, so I've, I know them intimately. I know their weaknesses, their strengths, their backgrounds. And also, as far as doing a deeper dive, you know, that we can certainly do that with our, with our own. We can do, we can do community surveys. We can do all of that with an internal-only process.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you elaborate what the community survey component, either Mr. Brady or...
So what I've seen before in prior police chief recruitments is a survey would be sent out to residents, whether it's, you know, they could fill it out online or paper and it's just gauging, what would you look for in the next chief? What's important to you? And then that information was collated and presented to council.
And does that help with, is the intent of that to help with recruitment or...
The intent of that is just to get the community input.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Brady. Councilmember Solomon and Councilmember Rodman.
We've had the community input. It's right there. Oral Valley ranks safest city in Arizona. That's a hell of an accomplishment considering we're next to one of the highest crime cities in Arizona, and that being Tucson. Transparency, there's transparency here. An external candidate is the one you have, you do not have transparency to. You haven't watched their career for 17 years. They've been interacting with the community for 17 or 20 years. They've been interacting with the fellow police officers all that time. If anyone had any doubt about the capability or the leadership potential of our internal candidates, you would not have the rank and file police represented by the two unions, which are so important, right, Josh? Up here, basically pleading, please do an internal candidate. They're qualified. We know them. They have our respect. They have the community's respect. All due respect to Chris, that looked like a typical HR memo, internal versus external. It did not at all address the culture of our community of Oral Valley or our police department. There should be no doubt in anyone's mind, or I guess it's beyond my comprehension, why when we are the safest town in Arizona, and we worked hard for it, that we are the innovators, that literally people from across the country come to our department constantly asking how to duplicate the processes we do, that we would not want to choose our internal candidates who've actually formed some of those processes, implemented those processes and improved those processes, who have their relationship with the council, with the staff, with the community, with all our surrounding police agencies. These are the cream of the cream. That's why they're here. Why do you think Oral Valley has no trouble recruiting police officers compared to the other municipalities? Because everyone wants to come here because they see what an amazing success this department is. An outside candidate is a total risk, 100%. You can spend as much time as you want interviewing or talking to them. It's going to amount to several hours. We have years and years, years of experience with our own qualified internal people. It would be an enormous disservice to this community to put the police department at risk and to ignore its accomplishments and that's what you are... what you are doing. If you say, go external, you are disregarding what the rank-and-file want, you're disregarding the time and investment over 17 years this town has put into training its own people to be ready for the job. And I'm sorry, you can say you support police all you want, they're a wonderful department, but, it's that but. But we should go outside, because if they're that good, well, then we'll compare them. No, let's face it, that but is, no, we don't want to go with the internal process for one reason or another. And that is a total, once again, disservice to this community. And I don't think it will be looked very well upon by this community. I think this community will be pretty darn upset if they find out this council is going to try to bring in a police chief from outside, when we have our own qualified people and we're in the position we're in.
Councilmember Rodman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, again, just to underline something I think somebody said earlier, I don't know how unusual it is, but it certainly is worthy of repeating, that both of our unions are supporting an internal candidate. That's a big thing. If there were problems anywhere within the department, if there were a need for an outside view of who we are and what we're doing, you wouldn't have had those two people come up and say, we support internal candidate. They know those internal candidates. They've worked with them. And I think that's really, really important to listen to them, as well as our chief. I said that earlier. I think the other difference, and we're talking about external and talking about open process and transparency, community policing is the definition of transparency in an open police department. Our police officers and exec-level staff are in the community all the time. The community knows these people. They've been in the room with them again, and again, and again, in every kind of volunteer effort, whether it be toys for the kids, or whatever it is, these guys are there. And so it's not, we're already starting with the knowledge of the town on who we are talking about. They know them. They know every one of them. And if they want to know more, we talked about having a process long before we hire, that lets folks come and talk to them and understand. We're not just anointing them. So I think it's important to know that that's a different step than a regular non-community policing model, where the people know the police chief. They really don't know anybody else unless they got a ticket. So, I mean, I just think we need to underline that. I mean, the exec-level folks have been here a long time, and they have had that intensive training on why this works. We're not going to have to train somebody else and hope that we got the right person. We know we've got the right person. And if we don't, if the majority of this council doesn't want to hire one of the internal candidates, well, we always have the option to go. And the message we send to the morale of this department is just, you can't, you can't measure that, when we just say, well, yeah, we trust Chief Sharp, and, you know, we like our police department. But it must be, we can probably be better. Let's look outside and spend $50,000 to tell these folks that, well, you may not be enough. So I think that we have a whole different situation than the normal situation in policing. And again, as Steve said, the awards and the safety that we all live in, and the fact that it's the first thing that everybody talks about, should be the model to say, why would we go outside when we have what we've got? Why would we do that? Just to do it? Sorry.
Councilmember Nicholson.
So, I want to check my last bullet points. Obviously, we're the safest town, thanks to Police Chief Sharp, every officer that we have here, been here for 20 years, and obviously, you've done a great job at the police union. Just talking with Kevin, you guys work together really well together. I can see that in every police force, I can see that in every union, you know, manager relationships, a lot of that, both of you guys were working together, because I know that's what it takes. You guys mentioned about Tucson being a high crime area. And one of the things I understand, talking with Kevin, public police officers, like, you see some of the crime creeping up to Ora Valley, and we're trying to bait that back. With Ora Valley being the safest town, I think that we could recruit, I mean, everyone would want to flood in here because they're like, oh, okay, it's the safest town in there, or city in the United States. I think you'd be able to recruit a lot of people. And one thing I mentioned with Kevin, this was a while ago, but, you know, if you do interim candidate, you're always going to have those questions. But if you do interim and external candidate, you're never going to have that over the top of your head, like, well, you can name a police chief, but you don't even have to compete with everyone else. I just throw an example out there, that we have an air traffic controller that didn't get a recommendation when he became a C P B, you know, kind of like probationary. We're going to see if you can.
Oh, thank you very much. I'm sorry, I apologize. Do I have to repeat all that? I don't know. I think most people heard me. It's a small audience now.
Just repeat all that now into the mic?
I will, later. So, I can't remember where I was going with that. But one of the things that's, you know, I'm bringing you guys out here in the audience, if you do an internal and external candidate, you're not going to be going to hold that over the top of your head and mean to say, like, look, we looked over the whole country, and you were the best out of the whole country. And I'd say that, with talking about my air traffic controller friend, I told him, like, hey, you haven't been recommended by anyone, they're looking to certify you, but you're going to basically get crap for the next several years of your life, because you never got that recommendation. And he got, he decided to go ahead with the certification, got certified, and now, you know, he gets a lot of crap for it. And I think if we do internal, external application, I hope, and I think you have done a great job, Chief Sharp, and I hope you guys rise to the top. And then if you get it, then there's no, nothing from anyone in the community to say, hey, it wasn't done nationally, you guys did an inside job type of thing. And like, I think it removes that cloud. And, I mean, removing clouds from things are good, I think, in my opinion. That's, that's why I support the external, internal.
Councilmember Solomon, and then Councilmember Penya.
What cloud? These folks have proven themselves in this community on a day-to-day basis. A lot of the community already know these people. No one is going to say, oh, you got it just because. That's ridiculous. They're in a position they're in because they are that good, otherwise they wouldn't be there. That's just, I'm sorry, a generic, once again, apply to everything, kind of an argument. This is a specific situation. This is a police department where you don't think you're going to hurt morale, when you have both unions saying, we trust these people, when you've got the community who says they love our police department and trust the field officer, all the way up to the chief of police. Of course, you're disrespecting the whole community by doing that. Of course, that's what you're saying. I love how it's always, oh, we love it, we love it, we love it, but. No, you don't. If you have to say the but, you're not sincere, you're not genuine. I'm sorry. You're saying, we think there's better qualified people out there, or we want to put in somebody outside the agency that we can control, because these people maybe we can't control as a council. That's all it is. Come on, let's try to be a little bit honest here. Any, given all the facts, there is absolutely no justification for not going through the internal process from the long secession, from the accomplishments of this police department on the national level. It's absolutely, boy, I, okay, I've said, said my piece. Thank you.
Councilmember Penya.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, Councilmember Nicholson, you said, well, you know, if we go out to national search, you know, I'm sure we'll, you know, it'll probably work its way out, and, and we'll get the best of the best. And, you know what, that's something that we probably just don't want to, oh, you know, okay, let's hope we get there. If we do that, in the meantime, we have now sent a very, very big message to a very large department that's basically saying, we really don't have the faith in our police chief of 20 years, who is doing a recommendation to say we have internal candidates. Why can't we be different? I understand, and, and, Chris, it's no disrespect to you, you're an HR person, you know what you're doing, and I don't want to tell you how to do your job. I'm the last person to do that. But we have to look at every situation differently. We always say how unique Ora Valley is. Why do we want to be here? I'll tell you why. Most people come here, and I think it's pretty common, realtors will tell you, it's because it's the safest city. It doesn't come by accident. It is a culture. And I don't think that I would want to risk when we don't have to, when we can start with internal candidates, because our chief is saying, we have that talent. So why not start with that? If it doesn't work out, to Councilmember Rodman's point, then we go out. But you know, in the meantime, we haven't destroyed morale. They see the leadership is going, you know what, they support us. We're going to continue to make this town and keep this town the safest city, because they go to work every day, and they're committed. Rewarding loyalty and commitment to employees is not new. So while, yeah, it may be that it could be common that we go out to an external practice, it's not uncommon that organizations reward their employees by promotions and giving them opportunities. I'm not, I'm not willing to take that unknown risk when I have our police chief telling us that we have qualified candidates. Why would we not take that step first? Let's be different. Maybe we don't have to go that route. Let's be different for a change, and let's go a different route. If it doesn't work, okay, it didn't work. So I don't think that that really hurts, to try that process. Thank you.
Councilmember Jones Ivy.
You know, I think it's disingenuous to sit here and say, by doing an external, internal recruitment, is disrespectful to our police chief or our, our force. Not only does it bring just more transparency to it, I've been through this a number of times in my career. You'd be surprised that sometimes you'll get candidates that you might not want them for chief, but you might want them for something else. So to sit here and say, we shouldn't do it, I don't think you're being objective. No one is sitting here saying that we don't want the people that you have recommended, Chief Sharp. What I'm saying is, let's do an external, along with the internal, let's see what we get. But I'm not saying, and I'm not going to sit here and let you all continue to say that, we are not interested, we're destroying the morale of our department. We're looking for a police chief. It can very well be an internal candidate, but I'd like to see what's out there.
Mr. Mayor, first of all, I don't want to be referred as being disingenuous here. We have representatives from the union who are essentially the representatives of the force. And they are saying, this is what they prefer. So how is that disingenuous to go against what their preference would be, when, when it is supported by a chief that says he has internal candidates to choose from? It does have an effect. And, you know, we're all talking about our places of work. I worked for a very large corporation. I know what it means to reward and to promote from within. Guaranteed, you know what it brings? It brings a higher increased retention rate, Chris? Is that not true, typically? You know, when you, when employees feel valued and there's morale, there's greater retention rates, possibly?
I would say yes.
Okay. So I don't, I don't think we're being disingenuous. We're just, you know, if the chief said, you know what, we don't have the internal candidates that could take my place, I'm not disingenuine enough to say, I don't care. Let's, let's do it anyways. I would listen to what he was saying, whichever way it goes. So I appreciate Councilmember Ivy, what you, I'm, Jones Ivy. We're just having a conversation here.
And I understand that. I get it. And I'm being respectful. But, you know, here's the thing. There's nothing wrong with the process. There's nothing wrong with an internal. It's, it's not punitive. I don't see that as being punitive. You're entitled to your opinion about it, but I don't see it as being punitive.
Okay, but, please don't call me disingenuous about it.
I don't see it. But that's what I, that's how I perceive it.
Okay. You know what, it can work both ways. And all I, all I was saying is that I just want to respect the speakers that were here, representing a very large department in this organization. And I think that means something. And we all know it, because we talk about it from our, either our current work-life or former work-life, how important things are. Well, I deem it that I've seen it's important to reward loyalty and commitment, if it makes sense. And in this case, the chief is saying, it makes sense. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, and I'm not saying that we don't have qualified people. What I'm saying is, let's bring some transparency to the process. And let's take a look at some external candidates.
How is that not transparent, when we have, when we have a police chief who is on public record stating that he is telling us, he thinks and he believes, because he's managed the department for almost 20 years, that he has candidates that are qualified? How is that not transparent?
I don't see it. I don't, I just, I just would like to see this process broadened so that we can look at other candidates.
Then we will agree to disagree.
Then we disagree.
Mr. Mayor, why don't we vote?
Just, just one moment. And I, as I, as I mentioned at the outset, the selection of a police chief is the single most important appointment that this council will make. And I have to admit, it's, it's a bit discouraging to listen to this conversation at the dais, given the, the significance of this responsibility that we share. And in anticipation to some of this, I mean, I've visited with representatives of the union. As I said, I reached out to Mayor Loomis to get some idea of his experience. I've visited, I've met with Chief Sharp, as well as others that the council may have, on this particular topic. I also went to a couple of different sources, given the fact that none of us, I don't, have selected a police chief before. So this is a new experience for all of us. I went to the ICMA, it's Selecting a Police Chief Handbook for Local Government. So it's published by the International City County Management Association, Police Executive Research Forum. I also looked, and admittedly, I'm not saying I, but I, this is important. And, and both of these, another publication was Handbook, or Police Chief Selection Handbook for Local Government. And it's published by the Police Foundation and International City Management Association. I guess, part of the insight that these publications provided for me in terms of external, internal, internal, external, is that it gave a variety of, you know, pros and cons, as Chris has provided to one degree or another. But the, basically, it said that, you know, there's a variety of, of different positions, the different individuals. And it actually, you know, said you, you can expect certain things from this discussion. And some of that has kind of unfolded here. I, I think, I think, given what I've been hearing tonight, it almost seems that having an external or an executive search firm may be of value to, to this council to help, help us through this important process. I believe that Chief Sharp has certainly provided a wonderful avenue for individuals that have an interest in serving as a police chief, by providing them with the experiences, with the training, so that they can compete on a national stage. I think that's a significant accomplishment. I don't really understand, quite honestly, the, the back and forth about, we're not talking about external, even though our past two chiefs for this community were external candidates. An internal, external process, just simply, it casts a wider net. It provides an opportunity, as has been said, to ensure that the community can feel confident that we have the best of the best. And, and so I think, but if anything else, it's just listening to this, that I think we could benefit. think we could benefit, as Chris has recommended, from an executive search firm to help us through this process. So, that's my, so I'm certainly willing to entertain a vote. I know, I know, right, right. So, all those in favor of the motion that's on the table?
Can we do roll call, please?
Yes.
Mayor Winfield?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Barrett?
Nay.
Councilmember Jones-Ivy?
Nay.
Councilmember Nicholson?
Nay.
Councilmember Penya?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Another motion? Or entertain a motion?
I move to direct staff to proceed with an internal, external recruitment for chief of police, utilizing an outside executive search firm and authorizing the use of general fund contingency reserves not to exceed $50,000 for this purpose.
A second.
Mr. Mayor? It's amazing how some apparent dais can totally ignore the uniqueness of this community and our police department. This is not generic. You are doing a generic approach to a very unique, special situation where our department is considered the top of the top throughout this country. Our chief of police serves on international committees. I wouldn't be surprised if he or some of our other members wrote some of the material that you were reading. So, to look at some generic police organization on how to select a police chief, that's nice. But how about we look at our town, our community, what we've accomplished and what is best? And apparently, that's not a consideration here.
So, we'll do a roll call vote.
Mayor Winfield?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Barrett?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones-Ivy?
Aye.
Councilmember Nicholson?
Aye.
Councilmember Penya?
Nay.
Councilmember Rodman?
Nay.
Councilmember Solomon?
Nay.
Okay, so we have item four, which can be struck from the agenda. So, item four, so let's, so any future agenda items? Hey, we have an executive session. Someone would make a motion? What's that? Do I need a motion for executive session?
Motion to go into executive session?
Motion to what?
Motion to go into executive session.
So, motion to go into executive session. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, joining us in executive session will be the town manager, assistant town manager, community and economic development director, town attorney, and town clerk. I did turn it on. Test, test. Motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, let's do it. Okay.